The first item on our agenda is, relates to the strategic plan. And the board will be reviewing Goal One, Strategies One and Two, related to student success. And as I shared with board members over the weekend, we want to maximize as much time as possible for board member questions, comments, and dialogue with one another about the Goal One report. And specifically if there's any suggestions or input you want to share with staff, especially about things that relate to policy or governance. So I will be managing this portion of the meeting. Dahlia will be taking note of anyone who wishes to speak, so make sure you catch her eye. And otherwise, I would like to just have Dr. Duran, if you could just, in a few minutes, just capture for anyone who's going to be watching this work session and want to get a basic understanding of what the subject matter is.
All right, good morning, everyone. As Ms. McLaughlin said, today we've decided to be here to engage in a dialogue rather than re-present Strategies One and Two. Those were presented in December, and for the public, if you'd like to watch, you can review on December fifteenth, I think it was seventeenth. We did have a thorough presentation of Goal One, Strategies One and Two. This upcoming Thursday, we will be presenting Strategies Three and Four to the board, and then we will have a subsequent work session in February. So for today, when we did engage in conversation after the presentation with board members, there were a few questions and follow-ups. There was one data request with regards to CIF data by Ms. Evans, and we will be including that data in the final report prior to approval. But today, we're not re-presenting any new data or presenting any of the answers to those individual questions per se. We did answer many of those questions at the board table, and some of the additional questions are further conversations that we would love to hear from the board in terms of the direction of the consensus of everyone. And so with me today, Dr. Presidio, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, Noel Klemenko, Director of K-12 Curriculum, and Rich Polio, Director of ESOL Services. And so we're here today to again engage in a dialogue with you further and/or answer additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duran. Could you just explain what the CIF?
Explain what the question was, or what CIF is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because for those who are watching, they may not know what that stands for.
Okay, so CIF is Students With Interrupted Formal Education. So they are students who have come to us at a grade level where they would have not been in school up to that grade level. For example, they may be coming to us as a 10th grader, not having been in school for four or five years, or perhaps never having been in school. So they're students that have certain academic behavior, emotional, social needs as well. And so as we presented some information on disaggregation of our ESOL students, Ms. Evans asked if we could pull out also what that data looked like for those CIF students, not just ESOL students as a whole.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we'll begin with Chairman Sandy Evans.
Thank you. Excellent report, and I really appreciate all the great data in here. And I think, you know, the direction we're taking, I think we're certainly doing what we need to be doing. I was very pleased with, I won't go down the list, there's a long list in this long report. Certainly, I think that it's important that we're emphasizing writing more, and you know, that's certainly an important part of what we do and what we teach. I was very pleased to see the homework policy reviewed as well, and the statement about the urgent need to improve student health and wellness. That's just in and of itself an important statement to make, I feel. I did have a few questions. Some of it gets into the nitty-gritty, so I'll stop when our meeting manager tells me I've, you know, gone too far, you know, with the nitty-gritty. But I particularly wanted to focus a little bit on the math piece and all the changes in the pacing guides. Are these substantial revisions that we're making? Are these minor, major? I'd like to learn a little bit more about the, both whether this is something significant and if teachers have been involved in this, and lastly, what this means for differentiation within the classroom.
All right, thank you very much for that question. I'm going to let Noel Klemenko give you a few details on that, but just in terms of broad strokes with our planning and pacing guides. We, over the last, really, two years, have done significant work to revise our curriculum that we provide to teachers. And at the elementary level, most of that work is really reflected in the planning and pacing guides. And we really view those as resources, not something that teachers are mandated to follow. But we've really been focused on rewriting the curriculum to be more in alignment with Portrait of a Graduate outcomes, and that's one of the desired outcomes in the strategic plan was for us to revise our curriculum to better reflect Portrait of a Graduate learning opportunities for students. So the way that we've approached that work is trying to make sure that the big ideas, the most important conceptual understandings for students are front and center and are driving the work in the classroom. And we're really trying to take a more Lerner-centered approach where we're really providing opportunities for students to develop critical and creative thinking skills and abilities. So in the planning and pacing guides for mathematics, we're organizing that work around those central components, those key ideas, those big ideas that students need to have to be able to transfer their mathematical understanding to lead them to success in the more complex mathematical work that they will do in the years to come. The other big factor in the math work that we've done is to try to make sure that our advanced math curriculum is available and accessible to all students. And we feel like we've been able to do that. We've had an audit, we've worked with our RAS, our Regional Assistant Superintendent Partners, to work with principals to make sure that students have opportunities for advanced math learning. But the big ideas, and as I said, Noel will fill out a few more details on math, but the big ideas around our curriculum revision is that we're really working around Portrait of a Graduate outcomes in all of our content areas. So Math Planning and Pacing Guides are just one, Language Arts Planning and Pacing Guides are another, Social Studies and Science, and we're beginning our work on Secondary Planning and Pacing Guides as well, which was something that we hadn't really provided in the past. But those, of course, are more organized, or will be, I should say, more organized around the particular course, not necessarily the subject.
And differentiation, how does this affect differentiation?
Yep. Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So the content of our math standards did not change. It's really how we present it and break it up to teachers, and then how they translate that to students. So the instructional units have been set up, as Sloan was mentioning, around the enduring understandings and essential questions. And the content has been broken up so that perhaps not everything is taught at one time. And that means, for example, they might learn some multiplication earlier in the year and then revisit that concept later, allowing kids that time to see it in multiple settings and in multiple applications. The Planning and Pacing Guide also contains a section that is, supports differentiation, not only for our Ls and our special education students, but for our advanced academics. It gives specific strategies and instructional resources to be used to support all learners. I think you also asked about how teachers were involved in this process. The math team actually led this sort of design process for all the other four core areas. And it was a two-year development process done very closely with teachers. It started in its conception, like what will this format look like, and what do teachers need, and what do teachers need to provide guidance to support their own content knowledge as well as their pedagogy? And we worked with them to design and to field test for two years before we put this out. So, and have been, and still are, collecting feedback for refinements and continue to have these documents evolve.
Thank you.
I think there was a few follow-up questions. Just one other thing that I wanted to add is that we've also embedded in the Planning and Pacing Guides professional development opportunities. So embedded videos and resources for teachers to really, first of all, understand the mathematical concepts themselves in ways that will allow them to better instruct students, but also to deepen their understanding of how best to teach these concepts to students. And I think it's really important that we continue to look at some additional ways to provide kind of that just-in-time professional development to teachers, because in a division our size with the kind of professional development budget that we have, we're really needing to look at more innovative and flexible ways to meet the learning needs of our classroom teachers as well. So that's another thing that the math team has kind of been leading.
So, thank you for that. I'm glad to hear that. I also wanted to ask you about, with Language Arts, we have new pacing guides coming out in 2017, '18. And there was a mention, I was trying to find the mention of looking at 15 different elementary schools, I'm not finding the reference unfortunately, but my question there was how many of those 15 schools are Title I schools? I guess what I'm, in some ways, asking, and again, I'm looking for the reference to the 15 schools, so maybe I need to come back to that.
Yeah, so let me, just a few comments on that, and then Noel might have a few things to add as well. So you're correct about the rollout timeline for the Language Arts Planning and Pacing Guides being next school year? And the way that we're doing this work is we're rolling things out only when we've had an opportunity to receive lots of feedback from the teachers that are going to be using the materials.
Okay.
So the process that we use for that is we call that field testing. And we start with a small group of schools and a small group of teachers. Oftentimes, we might start with even just one school in the initial phases of the work to really make sure that we understand what are the needs that teachers have for the materials that we're trying to create to support them. And then, based on that feedback, we'll create basically like a draft version one of the work, and then we'll field test that in a larger group of schools. And those are the 15 schools that you're referencing with respect to the Language Arts Planning and Pacing Guides. And then, based on that work and the feedback that we receive from those 15 schools, then we'll roll the materials out to everybody across the division. So this does result in a lot of input and a lot of feedback from teachers. And I think what we've seen over the past couple of years when we've really taken this approach to curriculum development is that we're getting resources that teachers really value a lot more, and we're hitting the mark, and we're able to provide things that teachers really are going to be able to use on day one in their classrooms. So when we think about what are the schools that we're going to field test, we have to make sure that we have a representative sample of all the schools in the system. So we look at schools to make sure that we have a representative sample of Title I schools. We look at schools to make sure that we have a representative sample of schools that have a high percentage of English language learners. We look at schools that have local Level Four programs with advanced learners. We look at regional distribution, and we try to balance that out to make sure that we've got a truly representative sample of FCPS as a whole.
Thank you. Well, that's, I'm glad to hear that. And basically, the same question on project-based learning, you have a pilot cohort, and so I guess we can assume that Title I schools, high-poverty schools, and schools with high English language learners are part of that as well? Is that true?
Yeah, that's correct. So we've got schools, again, that are representative across the division. With the project-based learning work, one thing that's a little bit different with that pilot is we do have one pyramid of schools. So making sure that we also understand the ability to think about this work across the grade levels and what a student's experience might look at, look like at fifth and sixth grade, and how will that transfer when they actually go into middle school, and how will that transfer when they actually then go into high school? So we do have one pyramid of schools, and we also have select individual schools around the county that are part of that cohort.
Okay, all right. I do appreciate you having that chart with, on AP and IB and the grades versus the scores. So it does, it does look like there's, generally speaking, the correspondence between them. There's some outliers, which I think we could probably take some lessons in those outliers, if there are places where, you know, it looks like folks are getting As but not doing so well. But that seems to be the, you know, a rarity rather than the norm. I do see that there aren't too many sevens on our IB scores, and that might be an area that we want to look at. Is that at all typical of a school system?
It's very typical. There's, yeah, there's a very small distribution of scores of seven on IB exams, so.
And then, just the, I think the final thing, and then I'll give up the microphone, even though I could go on and on, of course, because this is a very meaty report, but with the graduation rates, I'm going to go to page 52 of the report. There was a significant drop. It looks like the significant drop was between 2012 and 2013, and then it's been more or less stable. But do we know what happened in 2012 and '13?
Are you on the slides or the narrative?
I'm in the narrative report.
In the narrative.
Yeah. Let's see, well, this.
Nothing.
Let's see, it's, it shows up, it's 52 on, 51, I guess. It's actually page 51 in the report. Well, that's the one. So, oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't graduation rate, it's percent passing all five academic core topics of graduates. And do we have a sense of what happened between 2012 and '13 there? No, we never seem to have come back from that.
New standards, right?
I don't know, is that what hap, well, but this is passing all five academic subjects? Well, if that isn't, I mean, happy to get an answer to that at some other time, it's just that kind of struck me as something that we need to be thinking about now.
So we're just kind of sidebarring here. We're definitely happy to get back with more information on that and dig into the data a little bit more. In the Strategy Three and Four report, it's going to be presented to the board this Thursday, and then the follow-up work session to speak about Strategy Three and Four with respect to graduation rates is going to be February 13th, so we can speak to that a little bit more at that time as well. I do think one of the main drivers, though, is the change in the standards on the SOLs that did not take effect until after 2012. And we have some of the slides where we can actually show where that changed, and you can see the drop in test scores from 2012 to 2013. We did not represent the data on this particular slide that way, but that, I think, is the main variable here.
But to pass the course, you have to pass the SOL.
That's correct.
And the SOL, so actually, I think that did answer my question there, because the standard changed in 2012, and that became harder. I see.
And just one plug I would put in, that I really appreciate the board's support. Last year was the first year that we offered high school credit recovery for free for our students, and we had a really high, it was over a 90% passage rate for students on the SOLs that actually took that summer school remediation course. So those kinds of supports, I think, are going to help us kind of bounce back from some of this.
Excellent. I'm sure we have a plan for it. So, and actually, that did answer my question there. So I do have one more, which is, I see that we're, we can look forward to a proposal to have our graduation rate match VDOE's graduation rate. When are we going to see that? I'm looking at page 62 to have our graduation requirements be the same as VDOE.
So we're going to speak to that a little bit more in the presentation to the board on Strategies Three and Four this week.
Have I gone beyond, too?
No, it's okay. I mean, just real briefly right now, we'll cover that a little bit more, well, actually, we'll cover that significantly more in detail this Thursday. But the timeline for some of those changes is really, we're looking at 2018, 2019, but we'll break that down for you more on Thursday evening.
Okay, didn't mean to jump it. Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Evans. We move on to Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders.
Great, thank you. I echo Chairman Evans' comments on what a great report and so meaty, and your presentation in some of these slides was really helpful in looking at being able to compare. Just have a couple of questions, and one is, you know, you've got a lot of division-wide data. We don't see as mu, we don't see any school individual data. It would be helpful for the, especially the magisterial district members, to have the similar comparisons at the school-based level, because one of the concerns that we hear, especially in the math piece, is the fidelity of implementation and ensuring, I mean, you guys do a great job of putting together really meaty substantive pacing guides, and especially in the math area. Math at one school doesn't always equal math at another school. And unfortunately, if we don't get it right in the elementary schools, then the ripple effect throughout a child's career is pretty difficult to recover from. And so I would like to know, I would like two things. One is if you can get us the school-by-school data. And then the second piece, more importantly, is how do you plan on dealing with the fidelity of implementation? Are there metrics that you are putting in place that you're saying, okay, schools, this is what we're looking for you to make sure that you handle or you achieve?
I'll answer the first question. So certainly, we can work with you to get you that individual either school-by-school or pyramid data. We can also work with you if you're interested in helping to show you through our Tableau system and through our online applications, where you can actually play with it yourself and look at different ones, and it's, and that might be helpful for some of you, but otherwise, we're happy to work with you and provide that data for you, because it is available right now to all employees, to be able to go in and disaggregate and look at different schools, different subgroups, all the way down to individual schools, pyramids. So we can certainly get that for each and every one of you, but we also would love the opportunity to show those of you that are interested how you might be able to play with that system as well, because then you might just, you know, middle of the night, wake up and want to look up some data, and you'll know how to do that. So we're happy to do both for you.
I'll go for the twofer on that one. Now, the next thing is regarding the, a couple of different things. You have a best practices website referenced in the document, and want to understand a little bit about how, have we totally gotten rid of Ecart, and now this is something replacing it, or is this supplemental to it?
So let me, let me actually back up and say a few things about your fidelity of implementation question, because I think it will impact answering this question as well. So one of the things that we talk a lot about in Instructional Services is kind of the philosophy that we are providing services, obviously, to teachers and students in the division, and that our leadership needs to be really clear. So we want a clear kind of theory of effective leadership. And the way we talk about that in our department is that we believe that there has to be a direction that's really clear where we're going. People need to understand where we're going. We have to align our supports and our resources around that, and then we have to foster individuals' commitment to do that work. And we believe that when we can do those three things, that supports our fidelity of implementation, because with over 200 schools and limited staff and limited opportunities for professional development, we have to be really smart about how we do our work. So with respect to the math work that we're doing with our planning and pacing guides, that is how we really try to be very clear about what is the direction that we want to provide to folks about what math, best practices, research-based best practices around math instruction look like. And we want to make those resources as accessible as possible for teachers, and we want to foster as much commitment as we can by giving them great products, but also great services. So to support that fidelity of implementation, one of the things that we're doing is we're working with very limited professional development budget to provide quarterly professional development to math leaders in every one of our schools, every one of our elementary schools. So we work with them on a quarterly basis, and their principals attend with them, and if they have instructional coaches, the instructional coaches will attend with them. And really is an opportunity for them to work together with Instructional Services and their colleagues to figure out how do we implement the direction that the Planning and Pacing Guide is providing. And we're finding that we're getting a lot of good feedback on the quality of that support service that we're providing. The other piece is, is that we want to give individuals that need additional help or have additional interest in furthering and deepening their learning, opportunities to do so. So we've offered academy courses this year to support the implementation of the new Planning and Pacing Guides. We've had about 700 teachers who've been able to participate in those courses and really deepen their learning about how to provide effective math instruction. So this idea of direction and alignment and commitment is really important in everything that we're doing right now in Instructional Services. So to get to your second question about the work that we're doing around best practices, our best practices model, we always had a best practices model in Fairfax, at least since I've been in the division for five years, and I think we had it for about five years previous to when I came into the division. But with the work that the board did around adopting Portrait of a Graduate and the strategic plan, we felt that it was really important to align our best practices to the strategic plan and Portrait of a Graduate. So we've done that with the learning model that we've put together, and that is represented in this report, it's represented in the slides and in the narrative, and that is really providing the direction to teachers about the kinds of instructional experiences that we want to offer in our classroom. We want them to be active opportunities for student learning. We want them to be based around inquiry, where students are really forced to think critically and solve problems. We want them to be based on big ideas and concepts, right? So we could talk a lot more about the learning model if you want, I'm happy to do that. But the learning model is our attempt to align our practices to Portrait of a Graduate in the strategic plan. And as a result of that, we've aligned our best practices website around those four domains in the learning model. Lerner-centered environment, meaningful instructional experiences, concept-based curriculum, and purposeful assessments. And that provides better direction to teachers, and the resources that we then populate on that website are hopefully much clearer and more actionable to be implemented in the classroom by teachers across the division. So that's kind of our attempt to align our work. The other piece about Ecart is, I always, I always want to remind folks that Ecart is just a data warehouse, if you will, where we house our curriculum resources and where we house teachers' opportunities to create assessments and look at assessment data. It's not a required system that we have. There's nothing that's required for people to use there. It's a resource that's available for teachers to use to access curriculum, instructional materials, and to create assessments. So we're not replacing Ecart, but we always have to remind people that it's just a resource, and we need to continue to improve the effectiveness of that resource so that teachers can find the kinds of things that they need. So a few things that we've done with respect to that, we've worked with the Department of Information Technology to improve our search functionality and feature in Ecart, so that you can search not just based on the grade level or the course or the standard that you're looking for, you can search based on where resources created by the division, where they created by another teacher in the same grade level or the same course that I teach. So we've tried to make it easier for teachers to be able to use and to populate their own materials, too. That's one of the things that's really critical for us right now, is with a limited budget for central office staff to develop curriculum materials, we've got to make sure that we're tapping into the expertise of all of our talented professionals in the classroom and making sure that they have opportunities to share their materials and their ideas with their colleagues. So we've, I think, dramatically increased the functionality in Ecart for teachers to be able to find those materials and resources that their colleagues are creating, and we've improved the ease with which teachers can design their own assessments. So in the past, in Ecart, you could only deliver multiple-choice assessments. Now, in Ecart, you can design performance-based assessments, constructed response, where students would have to select not just A, B, C, or D, but write a short answer to a question, where teachers would be able to design rubrics that they can use to assess student work. So we're continuing to evolve the functionality in Ecart to be more in alignment with the kinds of resources that teachers need to really help students develop Portrait of a Graduate skills.
One other thing I would add that I think's important, not, I'm certain many of us on the board understand this, maybe for the public. So one key distinction for our curriculum work, as you look at many other divisions, is that our theory is around understanding, commitment, having teachers understand, commit to it, own it, ownership, and then implementation. Many divisions around us in our, in Virginia and across the nation are implementing curriculum by telling teachers, here's what you need to do, follow it on this day, follow it on this week. Some go to the actual day, the time of the day, the actual, you know, 8:50. Some go to the actual day, the time of the day, the actual, you know, 8:55, you should be doing this. We are taking a very different approach. Now, to your point, Ms. Corbett Sanders, that then does have implications on how is it implemented? So that's where Sloan was just describing, many of the resources that we put in place to try and help teachers on that initial part of understanding and ownership. Because we believe if teachers truly have ownership and not are told to comply and just follow orders and directives, then the quality and level of instruction will be much more meaningful and impactful for student learning. And in most divisions, we see right here in Virginia, again, that's not the case. It's here's what you teach on this day, on this particular subject, you must follow this. We're taking a different approach here in Fairfax County, which I think is very innovative and very thoughtful and mindful of teachers and students. But to your point, we have to then also put those checks in place to ensure that we're getting implementation across the division.
And I guess that's the question is how do we ensure, what are those checks and who's checking? Because there have been in the past concerns about the fidelity of implementation, which then has the knock-on effect of the success of students in later points in their career, especially in the math curriculum. So if you at some point want to just provide a little bit more insight on how you ensure those checks are in place, that would be helpful.
Well, I can say a few things on that right now. And then I think Mr. Parrish wants to add a few comments perhaps as well. So around implementation checks, if you don't have a clear direction of what the expectations are, it's really hard to check, right? So that's one of the things that we've really been trying to do in the planning and pacing guides and other materials and resources that we create, is provide a clear expectation of this is what best practice would look like. Because if I don't know the standard as a teacher and I don't know the expectation, then of course, implementation is going to look different. So when Dr. Garza was here, she often talked about this work as making sure that we had the program standards really clear, right? So we've done a lot of work in ISD to clarify program standards. What are the program standards for advanced academics, for example? What are the program standards for English language instruction? And we've been working on that. And we actually are going to have a work session coming up where we're going to talk more about that work that's happening in ESOL as well. But in all of our programs, we're trying to clarify, what does this work really look like when it's done well? The next piece then is you have to get people committed to do that work. And the only way that you can do that is to provide them lots of opportunity to use their professionalism, right? Use their creativity to make sure that we're not just telling people what to do, but we're giving them opportunities to add value to the work. And that's partnering with the schools. And that comes from the professional development opportunities that we can provide to teachers. And we don't have an opportunity, we have very few opportunities to provide direct professional development to teachers from central office. We only have two days a year, and those are half-days usually because time is usually also spent doing professional development at the school. So we have to be a lot smarter about how we do this work. So that's where we're working with those instructional leaders in the schools to make sure that they can support teachers, developing teachers' understanding and commitment. So first and foremost, those are the administrators in the schools. So as I mentioned, with the professional development sessions for mathematics, when we're rolling out the new mathematics, planning and pacing guides, we want principals and administrators to be there so that they understand that and that they're working with their math leaders in the building and their instructional coaches to work together as a team to support teachers. The same thing is true in the literacy work, for example, that we're doing. We have a literacy team that we've identified from each school where we have grade-level teachers along with administrators and the instructional resources, instructional leaders in the school, like our resource teachers, that come together on a quarterly basis, work with professional development opportunities that are provided by ISD, and take that work back into their schools, into their CLTs, into their departments, and into their grade-level teams to support their colleagues in implementing the work. So the implementation has to start with a clear direction. It has to be supported with quality professional development. And then the first folks that really check that work are the teachers themselves. How am I doing implementing this work? So we really encourage a lot of reflection. We've created lots of self-assessments for teachers to use individually with their teams, with their principals to say, with respect to this work that we're doing, how is it going for me as a teacher? What am I doing well? What do I need to learn more about? Where do I need more support? And our principals are able to use information like that to craft their own professional development opportunities at the school, which can happen much more frequently than what can happen at the central office. So that's the first piece is with individuals' understanding, what are the expectations? How can I kind of self-assess? The other thing then that has to happen is we need to see the work in action, okay? So we've introduced new protocols that I think if you have an opportunity to talk to principals in your schools that are using the instructional rounds protocol, that has been widely, widely viewed as a success by folks in the building because that provides an opportunity for folks to visit classrooms and see the work that their colleagues are doing, and also to have other individuals visit their classrooms and see the work that they're doing and give each other feedback. So that's been very successful. It's not an evaluation process. It's not tied to the teacher evaluation. It's not tied to performance. It's tied to how can I get better at improving my practice and how can I help my colleagues get better in improving their practice? So we're continuing to support schools with those kinds of protocols where we can see the work in action. And then the next layer of that really is the principals really understanding how they can support the implementation in the schools. And then the next layer of that is the regional assistant superintendents and central office department assistant superintendents really understanding how best to support schools in this work. So, you know, it's complex, changing practice and getting consistent practice in a large organization that is people-driven, right? Because teachers have obviously a lot of autonomy and we want to respect that and we want to encourage that and we want to respect their professionalism. But we also need ways to continue to support implementation of new practices. And we think that we've got a pretty good balance on that right now. We can always get better. It's not perfect. But that's kind of, those are some of the strategies that we're using.
So if I could just add real quick, because that was a great question, right? If you ask, that is a complex issue about how you drive out the best possible instruction for every kid, right? And in the past, I've been a harsh critic of our curriculum resources and how supportive they are of teaching. What I see coming out right now, just honestly, is pretty good, right? So I see this, how would a principal feel it, right? So I look at this complex thing and smart people that are giving you these tools and resources and say, okay, the first way we can get better is provide the resources and the training for our teacher corps to improve as a whole. Then you attend to the issue of internal variation. Is it too much? So if I'm looking at that as a principal, you know, if I have a wide variation between what's happening in one classroom to the next, then I need to attend to it. And what Sloan is talking about, your best resources, is we've positioned most of our teaching staff into teams, right? And you have a lot of expertise within that team. And if you use their common assessment data in that way to look at it and get them to share their best practices, those are the two improvement theories that attend to internal variation. Get a better product system-wide as a principal and a RAS. Make sure you use the expertise you have in your school to make sure that the instruction that's in one classroom is as good as it can be across all classrooms.
Great. I'll just finish up. And I thank you, Dr. Parrish, because I think you've captured it. I would just want to make sure that we do that internal variation between schools as well. And then just two additional, and you don't have to answer them here, but if someone can get me the answers. One is what about what's happening with science in our elementary schools? Because that, yet again, is a foundational piece that can impact a child's success. We see that in certain elementary schools have zero children that actually get into Thomas Jefferson High School. And a lot of it is because of their experience with science in elementary school. And so having a robust and consistent delivery of science across all of our elementary schools is important. And then my last question is on the responsive classrooms. I've gotten some mixed feedback from parents on the responsive classroom. Some love it, but there has been a significant concern that the responsive classrooms may take up too much time in away from the subject matter and focusing more on how you teach students to be polite and responsive and etiquette in the classroom. And so those two questions, and then I'm done.
I'd be happy to tell you a little bit about what's going on in science right now. As you all are aware, our approach to science has been to supply teachers with units that are, we refer to as kits, right? So, and people have different emotions around kits, but that is a very different approach than we take in all of our other subject areas, right? It's very much a, here you go, here's everything you need. But what we're finding is that teachers still have a significant amount of preparation and understanding that they need to develop around the scientific concepts and around the big ideas of those units in order to teach them effectively. So we are taking a look at the guidance that we're providing to teachers in sort of two different ways. We definitely want to have science planning and pacing guides that follow the same type of format that we have with the other core areas because our elementary teachers are dealing with all four core. And so to have a document that feels similar will aid them and to be able to understand the information. But we also need to look at what we're providing as far as the teacher resource guides for each of the units. So we are reconstructing that to, again, build out those enduring understandings, those bigger concepts, to make them more user-friendly so that we can ensure that teachers feel very confident to teach the science curriculum and so that they understand the amount of time and they can do effective planning with their teams around science like we're seeing in some of the other subject areas. So we're trying to change our thinking around, oh, we do science kits, to we teach science curriculum. And to make sure that we are providing a rich experience in science for students through their elementary years.
I would encourage to include a science fair as a requirement at each of our elementary schools because that has become a distinguisher between one school and another. And if we're talking about fidelity of implementation and equity, we want to make sure that we teach all of our children and provide them all the same experience in that area.
Just a couple other things I would mention, just as a reminder, really to the public, I think more than anything, is that we have also really focused on STEAM education in Fairfax County over the last several years. And at the elementary level, we've been doing a lot of work in that area. So science, technology, engineering, the arts, mathematics. And at the elementary level, we have about 60 classrooms now, or I should say 60 schools that have implemented at least an opportunity for students on a rotational basis to visit STEAM classrooms where they can work on things like computer programming, robotics, and applied scientific concepts, which is just bolstering students', I think, interest in science and technology and engineering. So I think that's really important to remember. And then we've also really focused on trying, because we don't have a budget for that. So it's all been within existing budgets and redeploying existing resources within schools to be able to do this. But we've also really focused on supporting schools that maybe in the past have historically been underrepresented in sending students to TJ, for example. So at the elementary level in the Mount Vernon Pyramid, we've really focused on supporting the professional development for teachers, getting them materials and resources to support STEAM efforts in their schools. So we've focused significantly in that Mount Vernon Pyramid on some of these efforts and other schools in Regions Two and Three that have been a little bit more historically underrepresented in getting students those advanced learning opportunities later. We've also, and we'll talk about this, all this bleeds over between Strategies One and Two and Three and Four. So we will talk about this more in Thursday's report as well. But we've got some exciting things happening at Edison High School with applied STEM, or I should say integrated STEM opportunities as well. So we're excited to share more information about that. So all of these kinds of experiences and opportunities, I think, are really important. Back to Ms. Corbett Sanders' point about, let's make sure that we have opportunities for all of our students equitably to be engaged in scientific understanding and learning.
And one other additional thing I would add, connected to what Noel said, centrally, we've been working with the RAS to look at elementary school schedules to understand how much time is being dedicated towards science instruction. Certainly, we need to help and provide the resources in terms of understanding. But one misunderstanding out there is that if you teach science, you don't teach literacy. If you teach science, you're not helping students understand math. And if literacy and math is our focus, then we can cut back on science time and not do it as much. So that is an understanding that goes back to what I said in our theory of action where the first piece is understanding and then ownership. And many of the resources that Noel talked about in terms of aligning it to having our planning and pacing guides be similar will hopefully help teachers to see that connection and then dedicate the time to being able to use science as a form of teaching literacy, as a form of teaching math. You just use the content in a different way and using the kits in a different way. So that's a different shift for some places, not all. We have some outstanding science programs happening in elementary schools. So it's not, I'm not speaking generally for the whole division. But there are a couple of schools where the team has gone in and identified there has not been enough time dedicated to the actual teaching because of that misunderstanding. And I know that ISD staff have been working with the RAS to really look and support those schools.
Okay. Before I move on, which in the queue right now, I have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Darnett Kofax, then Ms. Strauss, and then Ms. Palczek. But I did want to just kind of give you a halfway mark. We started 10 minutes late, but we now have had dialogue for almost 45 minutes with two board members having asked their questions and receiving comments. So I think this is probably one of the most important things we do. So I don't want to discourage people asking their questions. I just wanted to kind of make you all aware that this, we are racing the clock.
And we do have the February 13th work session, which is, I know Strategies Three and Four, but if we need to continue the conversation, as Sloan said, they all kind of blend together in some way. So I know we're tight on time with a budget and CIP today, but just want to remind the board and the public that we will have a continuing conversation on February 13th about Goal One as a whole.
And I'll be more concise in the next 35 minutes here.
Well, actually, I appreciate you both saying that. And that did run through my mind that fortunately, we do have the follow-up work session. But I did want to emphasize that, well, I appreciate you being concise, this is exceptionally important, what we're doing. So I also don't want you to hold back from helping better educate the board in the work you're doing because hopefully, this helps then our understanding of what's going on in the system.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm warned. So I just, in response to Ms. Corbett Sanders' question about responsive classroom, and I'd be happy to talk about this more, I just know as a classroom teacher, if you don't make that investment of time early on in establishing a strong, supportive, respectful learning environment, you pay for it later. So actually, it's a time saver, I think, if you do it right. But I understand there are always questions about that. So my question, we can talk later, I'm sorry. But my questions are, and we've already talked a lot about project-based learning and training and all that, and we've got some pilot schools. I guess, and I really appreciated the comments about how, as a principal, Dan, you would kind of make sure that it's happening in every classroom. And so I guess that's my, and this is more of a theoretical, maybe philosophical question. Do we, as a school system, believe that project-based learning is the best kind of learning and that it is appropriate for all learners?
So this question comes up a lot when we're talking to principals and teachers. We believe that it's an important instructional strategy, but it should not be used as the only instructional strategy. So we want it to be used when it's appropriate. And that's why we, you know, go back to the learning model and talk about that domain of meaningful learning experiences. What we want that to be about is the kinds of learning experiences that are going to help students develop deep understanding of critical concepts and important skills that will allow them to transfer that knowledge to new learning experiences. And we think project-based learning is one really important strategy, but not the only important strategy. So we really encourage people to think about just starting with maybe one small unit, like a multi-lesson project-based learning unit. We don't want people to go from traditional teaching, whatever, you know, image that conjures in your mind, to project-based learning. Different instructional strategies are important and should be used for different instructional purposes. So we do think that we want project-based learning to be used K-12. It's not just for certain grade levels or for certain subjects. We think it can be used effectively in all courses, at all grade levels, and in all subjects. But we're really, really careful to set that expectation that it's just one type of learning. that it's just one type of instructional strategy that will help develop problem-solving skills, critical thinking skills, creativity.
Thank you. So we believe those skills are really important and we believe that it's an effective way to get kids there, right? So here's what I worry about, is that you do the training, you bring it into a building, and then you have teachers who say, well, my kids aren't ready for it. This is not appropriate for my kids. And well-meaning, you know? How are we watching out for that? And, I mean, do you believe that there are some kids for whom it's not appropriate?
No, we actually believe it's appropriate for all kids. And we, you know, are really at the point right now of collecting evidence to show in schools that might have high percentages of English language learners or high percentages of students with disabilities or high percentages of low-income students, that when it is used, it's used effectively and can actually translate into better achievement results. So we're working with George Mason University on a research project around this. And we're, you know, in the preliminary stages of starting to collect this data. But we have seen data where we can correlate students' opportunities in project-based learning in schools with increased standardized student achievement scores on things like the SLLs. So that's powerful information. Even more powerful information, I think, are the teachers and the principals telling the stories of what instruction looks like and the kinds of outcomes that they get when they try these kinds of things, again, not the only thing, but these types of more engaging and authentic learning tasks.
Thank you. That's helpful. All right, and then on page 15 of the narrative, it's the Closing the Achievement Gap Team, right? And so, and I know closing achievement gaps is a systemic project, right? It's got to go on everywhere all day, everybody really working on it. So I appreciate how big it is. Do we, and maybe I'm missing this, but do we have measurable, do these teams have measurable outcomes? And is there a way for the community to keep track of their progress?
So I'm going to let Rich speak to this a little bit more because he's the project manager for our Closing the Achievement Project, which actually is multiple projects in one. So for each of the Closing the Achievement Gap drivers, we have a project team that's working with partner schools. And yes, measurable outcomes with respect to the work that we're doing. We had an opportunity to present that work to the community about a week and a half ago. We appreciated Ms. McLaughlin attending and learning more about the work. So we're happy to make more information available outside of this meeting as well because we think we've got some pretty exciting things happening there. But Rich can fill you in a little bit more.
So briefly, as you mentioned, it is more than just the team in order to close the achievement gap for the divisions. It's going to take more than just the Closing the Achievement Gap Team. However, what we've done is taken the six research-based drivers that were established a few years ago by a committee of community members and FCPS staff. And so now we, this year, we just started, as Sloan mentioned earlier, that kind of improvement, the improvement science process of working with some pilot schools and some sites to practice the work in. So in each driver, we have, we have an ISD or DSS staff that are leading a team, for example, in academic support. We have, we're working on responsive instruction strategies at Groveton Elementary School and at Stone Middle School. So those are our two pilot schools this year. What we learn from those schools using, we have actual metrics and measures that we're using to see, to hopefully that less English learners will be found eligible for special education, that they will have practices in place to create meaningful and powerful interventions for students. So that's the work that we're doing there at those two schools. That we have metrics that are, you know, we believe are measurable, that at the end of the year, we'll be able to say, yes, this worked, this didn't work. And when we roll this out to more schools, perhaps on a pyramid level next year, what have we learned from it and, you know, what's going to work at those schools? And how can we then roll that out to the division level as well? Similar to the work of the Planning and Pacing Guides, it's kind of along that same process is what we're doing with Closing the Gap Team.
Okay.
If I could just say a couple of things, and I apologize for taking more time, but since Rich mentioned the term improvement science, I do think we should talk about this just a little bit more briefly because our department has really been focused on using improvement science in all of our work. And that work started about two years ago with some of our staff members getting a fellowship to work with the Carnegie Foundation and Stanford University to learn more about improvement science. And essentially, what improvement science says is it really tries to get at the questions that Ms. Corbett Sanders was asking around inconsistency, lack of coherence, fidelity of implementation in large organizations or large, you know, systems like systems of education. And essentially, what it says is typically what happens in large systems and large bureaucracies is you come out with a set of standards or a curriculum or a program that you want to be implemented and you tell people that you need to implement this. But the problem is, the people that design that set of curriculum or resources or whatever it is, were not actually working with the folks in the schools that need to implement it and did not necessarily fully understand all of the implementation challenges that would be met. So improvement science gives us a process by which we partner with the folks in the classroom, in our case, to learn more about how we can design resources, materials, curriculum that they can actually implement and will want to implement on day one when we receive, when, you know, when they receive those resources. So that's why we start out small with an investigation process of really understanding their issues, their challenges, the problems that they're trying to face. We co-design materials and we test them and we get feedback. Is it working for the teachers? Is it working for the kids? Based on that feedback, we make necessary adjustments and changes, and we evolve that work very rapidly. So our project teams, we have project teams leading all of this work that have not just central office staff members, but folks from the schools as well that give us input. And they work on a regular weekly cycle to improve the quality of the work that we're doing. So we're doing that in each of the six CAG drivers, but we're doing that in a lot of our other projects as well. So we'd be happy to talk with you more offline about that. But I think it's really important to get back to your question about the measurement then, to understand that we've had in our school improvement plan for the last two years a requirement that all schools write a goal with measures for closing the achievement gap. But part of, I think, the challenge was for people to take the resources and materials and the strategies that we're providing and figure out how to implement them in a way that actually was going to have a large impact. So that's why the work on our project teams, to figure out how to do this work better with schools, is so important so that we can better discover those best practices and share them more widely across the division.
Thank you. And I really do appreciate, you guys are doing amazing work. I think if we could just sit all day and listen to all the, you know, it's wonderful because it is the most important thing we have to think about, right? And I really appreciate, and I agree, that we never want to script teachers, you know? It's disrespectful to them and it doesn't work. So, but it's harder to do it another way, but it's much more likely to be successful and it's slow. And sticking with a plan or a project, you know, over time, so we don't have this feeling that we're whiplashing between different ideas, you know? So we all have to have some faith and that's great. One more question. If we were to have some kind of a dashboard for the community about equity or closing gaps, and I'm just, I'm throwing this out there, so if you want to get back to me another time, it's fine. What, I want to, I would ask you to think about what kinds of measures we should be reporting to the community in something like a dashboard where anybody could go to the website and I say, I want to know how this school system is doing when it comes to closing gaps and equity. You know, I'm thinking of like, you know, on-time graduation or access to rigorous curriculum or, you know, that sort of thing. I don't know, just, it's something I'd like to see us do and I'd like, I very much would like it to be informed by what you think are important measures, but.
So just real briefly, we'd be happy to talk about that more offline. We've had that discussion with our CAG Steering Committee that has community members on it. We think that we do have some ideas about how we could do that work, so we'd be happy to work with the board and try to implement something with you.
And I would just say, a very important part of that is that it's not solely relied on the test scores. We have to look at holistically how students are doing because there have been some divisions and school districts across the country who've done some really great work on equity dashboards, but then when you look closely, it's back to just testing. So if we're saying that we're about portrait of a graduate skills, if we're saying we're about looking at the whole child, and then we create a dashboard that is not highlighting that, we have to be very careful. So we can come back and talk more in detail, but I just want for the public to hear that as we're thinking about this, we're looking holistically at everything and not going back to just SLLs. It's a challenge that every district has, and I think we say we don't support just looking at test scores, but then we create measures that tell a different story. So we have to be careful with that.
So just real quickly, because I think Dr. Duran raises a really important point. So we would argue that we think that we would need to design measures around basically all of the drivers in the holistic plan. So relationships, family engagement, access to rigor, not just student achievements.
Thank you. I completely agree. Ms. Hines, I did not want you rushed. So is there anything else you want, you sure? Okay. All right, then we will move on to Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I do thank you for this report. As Ms. Hines said, your hard work is very evident and I appreciate all that you're doing to, you know, to work with a diverse and growing diverse student body, growing diverse in socioeconomics and what those challenges bring. And they are evident in my district and Ms. Corbett Sanders' district. And my line of questioning will mostly be around the ESOL programming and the newcomer programming and what we had been talking about, fidelity of implementation of programming and how that looks. And I appreciate your answers, Dr. Presidio, to this point to help me understand better about what you're doing and how you are really taking to heart what we have talked about as Portrait of a Graduate and Dr. Duran also implementing those and putting those together. I still think we have a little ways to go, of course, we know that. But I appreciate how that's working and how we're, and I think the board needs to understand that too, that, you know, as we go through this change with superintendent and everything, we have developed some good work and we need some years to see this through. And I think that's going to be very important as we look forward to the new head of the division and make sure some of these things, we have the opportunity, both for talking about the word, for that fidelity of implementation, to see the success that we need. So that will be our challenge as we look forward to new leadership.
So I'll let Rich speak a little bit to the ESOL questions.
Yes.
But just to the last comment that you made about staying the course and the conversations that I have with school-based leaders and the folks in the department, that is really their wish and their desire. They feel really confident in the work that we have with Portrait of a Graduate, the direction that we have with Portrait of a Graduate and the strategic plan. So if we can, as a board and as a leadership team, continue to advocate for staying the course, that definitely would be well-received by the folks in the schools.
Yeah, I agree and I hope my colleagues are listening to that because I think it is very important because I think we worked really hard as a board, as the old board, as the current new board, as a leadership team to get to that. We worked several years and it wasn't something we threw together in a six-week period and said, let's go. So, and I think we're on our way. So first of all, the newcomer programming, Rich, Mr. Pulio, I just, I know last year when we were talking at the end of the year with the pilot programs at Lee and Stewart, we had, I had been approached by several teachers who, you know, were concerned about what was coming. And I guess, so just what has been the current feedback from the, as this was rolled out to all schools?
So the feedback has been the same, that people are afraid of what was coming, a lot of teachers. We've spent lots of time with individual schools with, we've visited every single high school this year to see how the program has been implemented, what supports do they need. We've done extra meetings with, we recently had a small program administrator meeting. So we've divided the division essentially into larger ESOL programs, medium-sized ESOL programs, and smaller-sized ESOL programs, really based on the number of staff and the number of students that they have. They have different needs based on the number of newcomers that they have, based on the number of SIF students that they are seeing. We continue to see an influx of large numbers of newcomer students coming to Fairfax County Public Schools. The entry data, the registration data from the last few months is the same as it was back in 2014, we had an influx there, so.
What are those numbers? Like, do you know them off the top of your head?
I would say that we, in 2014 was the first year that we assessed 8,000 students for the year of the 2014-15 school year. It dipped a little bit last year, but we are definitely on our way to assessing 8,000 new English learners, which translates then into about 6,000 of those students becoming ESOL students. So we're, we have a steady influx and.
But we can also get you updated.
Yeah, we can give you exact, for specific information about each school. But, and also, we continue to see large numbers of students enter into those same schools and school pyramids that we have seen in the past. So it's definitely a regional kind of influx of students. So with the, so our professional development and training and support for schools has been very differentiated this year. So we've had to pay special attention to our smaller programs who may have less staff and different populations of English learners. And with medium schools that have, that are growing, you know, for example, we have, we have schools like Fairfax and Centerville that have had less SIF students but are seeing more this year. And so we've been supporting those schools specifically what their needs are. And then our larger schools, we have a monthly, excuse me, a bimonthly meeting with the department chairs of the larger schools that we have about, actually 12 schools on that list right now. And we meet with those department chairs who are non-teaching department chairs. They, well, actually at Mount Vernon High School, Mr. Pepple, he has a few, he's teaching one class, I believe. But every other department chair is non-teaching. So we're working with them about what exactly their needs are. That's the Herndon, the South Lakes, the Stewart-Lea, Mount Vernon West Potomac, and the Dale Falls Church.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate, you know, as you look through these, what this year's numbers look like and whatever kind of.
But the feedback, though, is the same, I would say the other thing, though, on a positive note, the feedback from the teachers, that while this is new programming, it's a new curriculum, there are higher expectations for students and higher expectations for teachers. That, we did give some qualitative feedback to the board last year, about, you know, halfway through the year, what the Lee and Stewart teachers are saying. And I think that that is the same across the board at other schools, that while it's been challenging for our teachers, that they recognize how much, how much more rigorous and how much more, I would say, almost appropriate and life-affirming for the students that this work is because they are gaining credits, that this is grade-level material that they're studying, and so recognizing that they're really being treated like every other student in the school. So we've gotten excellent feedback from that. It's an ongoing process right now still.
I appreciate that. I know what hard work you've done. And, you know, knowing what I saw in the pilot program at both Lee and Stewart when I visited them last year, I know the, what you said, I think that was a good word. You said life-affirm, life-affirming.
I think it is, yeah.
That was the point, I think, of the desire when I brought this forward because there were so many, there were so many instances where it just wasn't working. And now I know we have to, just with every new initiative, that kind of the kinks have to be worn out, you know, broken in and we have to move forward. But I'm glad to hear that and I, you know, want to keep up with you and continue that. So, thank you. I think my other, and I don't know how much more you can, you can add, Dr. Presidio or Dr. Duran, to this part of the conversation. But my concerns, of course, lie very much with what my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders, was talking about, the fidelity of implementation. And I appreciate all the work and I, and I do just have to say, I think like one of the things you mentioned, well, a couple of things. Like the last, the last comment, Mr. Pulio, he said some of these things are regional. And I know we don't like talking about tipping point studies, but they are real and they exist and they exist in my district. And I know we don't like talking about tipping point studies, but they are real and they exist and they exist in my district, they exist. So I think when you talk about the Edison Program and what that is bringing to a school, I think that's very important because once a school reaches that tipping point, there, there is a certain percentage of people who are no longer going to feel and may not, make them feel that their families or their children are no longer going to get what they, what they need. And I think that's a, a reality and I think that's why programming, when you look at these schools that are, that are housing many diverse learners and, and wide and varying socioeconomics, it's important to do that. I, I will, I, I guess my question, and you may not be able to answer this, but I, but I'll say this. You know, I know that the TJ admittance rates are but one indicator of how we are doing. But I think I've been watching these rates since I've been on the board and they haven't changed, unfortunately. And I know that's but one indicator of, of the TJ admittance rates, but one indicator of the programming. But when you consistently have schools that have zero kids getting in or five kids getting in, I, I think it's important to say there is, there is something amiss. And it goes back to what Ms. Corbett Sanders, what, what do the, what do the, what does the programming look like in elementary school? And if they don't get that start there. And, and I appreciate what you're doing and what, what you've said. I guess for me, I, the, I would ask if you, if you do these strategies, do you anticipate changes in things like that? Because, you know, the dashboards worry me because of where some of my schools stand. If you base it on test scores, it just plays into those fears and concerns by those great school website types of things. So if you, if this is real, do you think some of these, how, how long do you think some of these changes would take to turn some of these schools around?
So you ask a really important question that obviously is very complex.
Difficult to answer. I know.
And there's not an easy answer to this question. So in terms of how long would it take to turn some things around, we have to unpack that a little bit and get more specific. What specifically are we trying to address? Because you can't measure things with, like, opportunity with just one measure, like you, like you pointed out, right? We can't just use TJ admissions as one measure of success. So we have to kind of work backwards from how are we defining success. What I would say is we definitely need to look at the things that we know that we can control, okay? So we can't control what happens outside of the home. We can't control necessarily what kinds of experiences students had when they come to us. So we have to think about the things that we can control. And that's where we've really tried to take the strategic approach with respect to thinking about those drivers and closing the achievement gap. And I'll just talk about one, for example. You know, access to rigor has to be critical for us because that's something we can control.
Right.
We can control making sure that every single one of our schools offers the same kinds of learning opportunities that any of our other schools may offer in a different part of the county. And we've been really focused this year on trying to make sure that we can bolster the programs and the teacher efficacy in schools where we have maybe historically not had much success in terms of student outcomes, right? So one example I would give you is the work that we're doing in Region 3 right now with respect to AAP curriculum and making sure that all students in Region 3 elementary schools have the same kinds of opportunities to Level 2, Level 3 services and Level 4 services, if we have a local Level 4 program. So that has been one of the primary goals of our AAP office this year is to work with Region 3 around tho, those actions that we can take to make sure that we've got the same kinds of opportunities of access in all of those schools. And those are the kinds of things that we're trying to replicate when we do work, like investing in things like the Mount Vernon Pyramid and STEAM education. Again, making sure that we can put those resources and opportunities in place for students in those schools that might not have had them previously. So that's something we can control. The thing that I would ask us to think about as a leadership team and a school board is we need to make sure that we understand that these kinds of opportunities are going to take resources, right? We can't do all of this with our existing resources. So we have to be really thoughtful and deliberate about those investments that we make. So that obviously is, is a larger budgetary question. There's some policy implications along with that. I know that we're gonna, your board is gonna be spending a lot of time this afternoon starting to look at the budget. But this is where things like needs-based staffing and other things that, you know, are gonna come to the table, we need to have some, some really intentional discussions about those. Because to get the same opportunities in schools where you maybe don't have that critical mass of students, it's gonna take some additional investments and resources and opportunities for those kids.
I appreciate that. And I would like to set up a meeting with you to talk more specifically about what you're doing in Region 3. I know you're doing that, but I, but I don't want to waste the board's time at this point to hear more specifically about that. The last thing that I would like to do, what I, would be a next step, on pages 32 and 33, I would like that data broken down by pyramid.
So pages 32 and 33 of the narrative or the PowerPoint?
So the AP, the AP and the IB?
I would like that broken down by pyramid.
We will, we will work on that and get that to you, yes.
Thank you. And thank you again for all of your hard work.
To your first question you asked, you know, much more we could say. I just will repeat what has been said around fidelity of implementation. But Dr. Presidio has already said, and what Ms. Hines said better than both of us, is if you're going to make sure that change is going to happen in this slow manner, that we believe that it's really about supporting teachers, that we have to commit to long-term planning around these things in our strategic plan. And as we get a new superintendent and as we think about a direction that we don't switch course, because that is what's going to cause the fidelity of implementation to take yet another dive or another pause or another direction. So as much as the board can have that conversation amongst yourself about, is this the right direction we're headed? Then making that commitment with whoever sits in whatever seat may be at the leadership level, whether it's superintendent or any of our seats, keeping that commitment and that focus. Because we will never get to it unless we do what other divisions are doing, which we know is not working either, which is just mandating people to follow scripts. And then we can certainly walk around and invest resources in checking that people are on the right page. That does nothing for actual long-term learning. It does short-term because we can all pat ourselves on the back and say that we know it's happening in every school. But whether something's happening on a short-term level or having a long-lasting impact is quite different. And from what I know the board's commitment and what the strategic plan speaks to, we are more interested in making sure we're developing the whole individual, whether that's the student or the teacher or the principal and those that serve our students.
Right, because we're in our infancy here. We just developed it and we're in our, what, year and a half now. And, and so I just ask my colleagues to, to be certain, to, to keep that in mind as we move forward with, with everything that we do, with budget, with looking forward to, with, as we, as we go out and cast the net for a new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenette Kofax. I have Ms. Strauss followed by Ms. Schultz. And then Ms. Palchek and myself have not spoken yet. And if any other colleagues who haven't had a chance to speak would like to, make sure you capture Ms. Palchek's attention. And we do have a go-back for Ms. Evans at the end. So now, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you very much. This is an exceptionally neat, meaty report. And thank you for the hot links in the narrative. So that, and for any in the community that really want to get deep, get a much deeper understanding of what's going on. The hot links do provide it and it's very, very interesting. So thank you very much for doing that. The, and I'm also pleased to hear of the plans for greater support around science instruction. The science kits and the units, I think, are excellent and I think that it is a better way to teach scientific, scientific method and investigation. But clearly, we need to make sure that science instruction is actually going on in all of our schools and that there is understanding that literacy, numeracy are integral parts of science. So I'm very pleased to see that going forward. Couple of questions under the assessment piece, because I know that when we, when we adopted Portrait of a Graduate, we knew part of, part of the challenge was going to be how are we going to assess progress. And one of them would be, we know that samples of student work, portfolios, et cetera. I also, by the way, I, I liked the chart that showed under Portrait of a Graduate. I am a collaborator, so the student is assessing their own piece on it. But if you could talk a little bit about two things. One is performance assessment, how we are doing on the broad range of assessment, because I know you just talked about that. And then also how we're doing with the universal screener. Thanks.
So if we have an opportunity to pull up the PowerPoint, we could maybe go to slide 40 on the PowerPoint because this kind of maps out this balanced assessment framework and continuum that Ms. Strauss is alluding to. So with respect to this particular diagram, you see that what we try to lay out here is that we need to move away from an over-reliance on one single type of assessment and really only one assessment as a whole when we talk about SOL. So this is kind of presenting a vision of where we think that we can go as a division to have a more balanced and more holistic approach to student assessment. So the second component, as you see there beyond the multiple-choice assessments, are performance-based assessments. And we're currently in the process of implementing performance-based assessments in those grade-level areas, third, fifth, sixth grade, where the SOLs were removed by the state and we had the opportunity to do something different. Many school districts, in fact, most school districts around the state, when the state removed those SOLs and said, "Do something different. We just need you to tell us what it is and document it," chose to use a multiple-choice assessment the first year out. So we've really been kind of carrying the flag that we need to do something different and use this opportunity to demonstrate to the state that we can create alternative assessments that will provide a, a type of information that we can't get from a multiple-choice assessment. So we've been doing really good work there, working with our elementary and our, a few of our secondary schools in, in grade 6. So that work is going well. But again, a lot of this gets back to, we need to provide teachers with a lot of training and professional development to be able to do this work well because we're coming off of more than 10 years in education of policy that asks us only to assess with, at least in terms of accountability, with multiple-choice assessments. So there is a lot of training work that has to happen here. So we've created some cornerstone, I guess, assessments, if you will, that teachers can use if they're not comfortable creating their own performance-based assessments. So we provided opportunities for teachers either to select things that we're using in some instant, or creating in some instances centrally, or to create their own. So we're continuing to build on that. We also have a group of schools that we're working with across several of the regions as a pilot project to go really deep in this work and to not just create what I would say is a unit-based assessment that's a performance-based assessment, but to create something that's a little bit larger in terms of assessing perhaps even the student knowledge at the end of an entire course. So that's where in the strategic plan, we refer to capstone assessments, an opportunity to demon, for students to demonstrate what they've learned at the end of a course. So we're working with, again, a number of pilot schools to implement those capstone experiences. And we're working on that in grades 3, 5, 8, and then at the high school level. And from that work, we hope to be able to offer to other schools in the division some key learnings about how we can use that type of performance experience for students to be assessed in addition to some of the assessments that we've already created. So we've got a lot of work going on in this domain right now. And our biggest challenge, I think, kind of comes back to time with teachers and money to support the development of these kinds of experiences. But we've got a lot of great work happening in this domain. And when you think about those last two boxes around performance assessments and the examples of student work, one of the things that we think that we can do is working with our Office of Student Testing, for example, to provide some ways to sample score, a smaller sample of these kinds of assessments in a way that would yield valid and reliable results to complement the kinds of multiple-choice assessments that we've historically used to provide a more complete picture of student learning at a particular grade level or in a particular course. But that's on the horizon. We're not to that point right now. And ultimately, we think that we could work with the state to try to argue that you shouldn't hold students accountable for one assessment. We need to have multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate what they know and what they can do. Because when we talk about state testing, that's an event. It's not really an assessment. So we talk about the difference between testing as an event, which we all have to do in life. When we become professionals and, you know, we seek professional licenses, we have to pass a test to do that, right? There's lots of tests that we have to pass. But that's different than really evaluating student learning. And that's where we think we need a broader view, a more complete view of assessment. So this is what we're working towards. We'd be happy offline to give you more information about some of the schools, some of the work that they're doing, put you in touch with folks that are really leading this work in the schools. But this is kind of trying to paint a picture of where we think we might be able to go in the division with assessment.
With regards to your question on the universal screener, or do you want to follow up first with Dr. Presidio?
Oh, that was, I want just a quick update on universal screen.
So for our universal screener, we are, as a reminder to the board and the public, we have 15 pilot schools, three in each region, who have been utilizing the tool for screening purposes as well as adaptive curriculum that's aligned to the identified areas of deficiency that students are getting in both reading and math. And what we're seeing right now is some very, very positive qualitative and quantitative results. Quantitatively, we, the OST department has correlated the findings that we saw from our initial screening for our students connected to the DRA results. And we're seeing that we're getting the same type of information, but even more. As we shared that with the state, because ultimately, right now, we would need the state to approve that this would be able to be used as a screener, they were very impressed with what they saw and have actually sped up their process to review approval for us to be potentially use this. They were really, really impressed with what we were impressed with and that is the fact that we're able to dig deeper and see foundationally, the foundational skills that students are lacking. You might have some students that previously, particularly if they were, let's use dyslexia as an example. They have been, may have been masked through their DRA score to not be identified as having a need. But now, because we're looking at the individual foundational skills, we can begin to see that they actually have a concern that we need to address. And then teachers can then develop a plan of action on how to support them. The area that we're still working with, and it's going back to previous conversation that Karen Corbett Sanders started with, and fidelity of implementation, and that's with regards to how the curriculum is used, the adaptive curriculum. So we do have a team that's starting to look at if we implement this. Because again, it's two purposes, screening and then how do we then meet the needs of those students that are identified. So the adaptive curriculum is one we're still looking at as to how we would be used appropriately, getting information from teachers on how they're using it now, visiting classrooms. But as a whole, in terms of the screening process, it has been very, very effective. And all of the comments that we've heard back from teachers and principals in that lens has been very good.
Okay, Ms. Strauss, you're all done? Thank you so much. I move on to Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't here for the earlier part of the discussion. Some of us still have elementary-age children. First of all, I want to compliment on the, on the narrative. If we can go to page 32, please. And if somebody else has already complimented on this. I'm sorry, the actual, so you have to go to the next page. There we go. So this is something I think maybe in particular, Ms. McGlocken and I had looked at this in the, in the successive page over time, which is correlating, and this to me is like a deeper thought, a deeper understanding of how we're portraying, where, you know, in, historically, we would talk about the number of AP tests our students took, which I always felt was, you know, I mean, I was a little embarrassed by that statistic. This starts to reveal a little bit more comprehensiveness. If we could go to the next page, please, because in particular, I was looking at that one. The next report, there's one more after that. The next AP IB is up, right. I'm sorry, I'm navigating at the same time. It said, I had pages 32 and 33 on the actual page.
So I apologize for the confusion on this. We actually resubmitted the updated version with the ID. It looks like we have the wrong version up here, so our apologies on that.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter. I'll try to, I'll try to narrow it. What I'm wondering is, is that, is there any, is there any? is, is that, is there any, is there any follow-up to some of this? Because as I look, you know, when you see, I don't know, I'm eyeballing, around thirty or so students got an I B score of a two, but got a B or better in the class. You know, and I'm wondering, you know, is there, you know, what's the follow-through? Because this is the information, but, you know, if, if the kids are failing the I B, basically a two is a fail, I mean, a fail, a fail of an I B exam. But they got a B or higher in the class, which also gave them a grade bump. There's something, you know, there's something disparate happening there. There wasn't, the good news is there wasn't as much in the converse. I mean, there was only one student who got a C+, who ended up getting a seven. I mean, that too should be, something was wrong. And I'm sure that that student was out of their ever-living mind, you know, that they got a C+ in the grade and got a seven. But this, but, but is there an intent to inform staff and follow-up and delve into what's happening in particular buildings based on this information?
Yeah, so we're still kind of in the infancy of that, because we've just created really the capacity to track and analyze the data this way. So that took a fair amount of effort. But now that we have that information, a few things that we've already started. So our content coordinators in these particular areas are looking at these results and trying to make better sense of them in terms of what are the questions that we really need to ask and think about as we work with the A P and the I B coordinators. So those discussions have begun. And then we're in the process of making sure that the principals have the information for their schools and can have follow-up conversations with their A P and I B teachers as well, so.
Excellent. That's exactly what I wanted to hear, because I didn't want us to collect the data. You know, anybody can collect data, who can use the data. The next page that I want to go to, it's thirty-six on my copy, which is the percent of grade-eight students who passed both course and SOL Algebra I. By subgroup. It's thirty-six on my, on my copy. There you go. There you go. So this is a perennial kind of area that I tend to bring up. And I had thought, and maybe it's, maybe I'm remembering incorrectly, but I had thought at some point we talked about disaggregating the students with disabilities line between either a high incidence or low incidence, because, I mean, to take fourteen percent of our students and lump them in, I mean, you could have profound disabilities which are impacting your ability on this, and you could have milder disabilities. And it seems to me that it's unfair, because that's a, that's a bad line, and it's persistently a bad line. And I don't, I don't think that maybe it's as bad as it is if we disaggregated and we understood the nature of what that line really represents. Because I don't think fourteen percent of our student population with, you know, that have disabilities are performing like that. I think there's something that's driving a line that's down that far. And I think that if we potentially teased it out a little bit, just like we did with the I B scores, that it may be more informative. I mean, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's a really important observation, and I appreciate you bringing it up. And you did bring that up previously. And unfortunately, we didn't capture that in the revised metric when the board reapproved the strategic plan last summer. So that's something that we definitely can do. So I appreciate that.
Okay, good. I'd love to see that improve going along. And Ms. Darnett Kofax, the points that she was bringing up about the TJ admissions, I'm wondering, just trying to maybe flip the binoculars for just a second, if there aren't, and this may be a question you may not be able to answer, but is there a possibility that there are schools, school pyramids, that there isn't an emphasis, an emphasis on getting the kids to TJ because the penultimate destination of the child as a high school or a secondary school is perceived within the community as being the school of choice? That they, that they don't really want to go to TJ? You know, that they, that they, for whatever reason, whether it's the concept of going to school at their base school, or that they perceive, you know, that the education that they'll receive at their base school is, you know, is their goal, is what they want? You know, that there is a quality education available at their base school? I mean, you know, sometimes you don't know that what people are striving for in terms of the applications or lack thereof, or lack of, you know, an interest could not be because they don't have the education that they need at the, at the lower grades, but that they actually do have the education that they want?
Yeah, I don't, I can't answer that question sufficiently, for sure. But I think it's an important question for us to think about. You know, I would say the work that we do in the system right now is trying to make sure that we understand what every student's path really is in terms of what they, what they want to accomplish both inside the system and then their next steps when they leave the system. That's why the work around our student learning plan, I think, is really important, and we haven't gotten that fully implemented as well. But really, our mission and our goal is to make sure that students feel like any program that we have in Fairfax County is open and accessible to them. And we've got to make sure, I would say, to continue to work on that. And it's really critical when students, you know, some of our minority students, for example, look at a program like TJ, that they feel like that's a program, that if I wanted to enter into that program, that I see the path forward and I know how to do that. So that's the work that we're trying to do.
Okay, that's, that's fair. But, you know, I mean, I think about pyramids like Robinson or West Springfield. And I have an extremely small, I think probably maybe region four, I'd have to look at the numbers. But I have an extremely small percentage. There aren't kids smart enough to go. It's because there isn't the interest to go, I think. I think they're like, well, you know, I love West Springfield, or I love Robinson, or South Kenny, or, you know, whichever the school is. And so I represent a huge population that doesn't have, you know, a TJ-bound, very high statistic. And so I'm just wondering, I, I wouldn't, what I'm saying is, is that my elementary schools that feed into those, those high schools, they would look like, oh, well, you know, you're not getting the same number of applicants, or you're not getting the same number of acceptances. Well, no, they're not. They're getting much less, but it isn't because those aren't quality schools. You see what I'm saying? I don't want, I don't want to label schools that aren't getting acceptances, or aren't even getting applicants, as potentially not quality schools. They are, they are.
And perhaps that may be true for some. I agree. I've talked with parents and students who didn't want to go there, and I certainly think that's possible. For us, in the context of the questions Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. Corbett Sanders were asking, though, we were coming at it from the approach that if a school doesn't have an advanced math program, if they don't have science opportunities, then we need to make sure that we're providing that so that should a student there want to go to TJ, that they have the same opportunity to go to TJ. So for us, it was, and it even wasn't so much about TJ, it was around having equal access to math and science. And as we looked at some schools, and as we looked at some pyramids, we didn't see that equity of opportunity to take science and advanced math that was afforded in other areas. So for us, that was our lens, not who wanted to go, who didn't want to go, because you're right, some students who could qualify don't want to go there. So for us, it wasn't about TJ per se, even though I know that is one element that people discuss. It was really around equitable opportunity for students to get math and science instruction.
And that's where Ms. Darnett Kofax and I agree completely, is that there shouldn't be places in the school system that don't have rigor. And in fact, even if there are students who don't want to go to TJ, who are happy going to their, their base high school and, and aren't going to apply, they should still have the rigor. They should have the rigor, access to the rigor regardless. And I definitely support her on that. And then just a very minor thing that we can actually see on, on this page, it's an editing suggestion for future documents. The colors on the subgroup disaggregation are exactly the same as those on ethnicity. I would suggest choosing some different colors, because you, you know, I go to yellow, and then I'm going to another page, and I'm associating that, which we have with Hispanic students, I think, on the ethnicity, and it's not the same. And it just, I think our, our documents would be a little bit more sharp if we had some clarity on that. Thank you.
Sure.
You know, I think it would be important in this conversation to take a little pause in the, in the thinking around this as we get into complexity of this. I once had a principal colleague say to me, he said, "Dan, what is the scoreboard?" Right? And back to Ms. Darnett Kofax's question, how fast can you move something within your school? And I think where we're at is that you're, we're on the precipice of doing something great in a holistic sort of way with kids. It has multiple measures. As a school person, I have to field it and say, what is the context for my school? So in one of the schools I was a principal, the TJ pipeline was something that we put into our SIP, right? Or if it's the I B program, right? So the question about how fast can you move something? If the scoreboard is narrow, which I would say we don't want to go that way, I could move that pretty quick. If it's a more holistic approach about what you're asking, the right kind of questions, that's something across the board that's going to take some time. And that, and the context of that school-based leadership is specific to setting within the framework that you created.
Ms. Schultz, are you all finished? Okay, I'd like to move on to Mr. Moon. And then we do have a go-back from Ms. Evans, and Ms. Palchuk and I have yet to speak. It is now ten-twenty. I know we started ten minutes late waiting on board members, and this is important work. No, we were missing six of our colleagues, so it wasn't any one person. So anyway, I just want to make everyone mindful for time.
Sorry for being one of those six missing earlier in the morning. My deejay required me to be there a little bit in the morning. So thank you for the presentation at the regular meeting and all your Q and A sessions, which I missed completely. So this might have been already covered. Please forgive me. But I'm going to be asking you just one or two questions, quick questions, going to the same page, your thirty-five, my thirty-six, the chart with the subgroups. Okay, could you enlarge that so that people can see it? Yes. That, that, that works, that works. Thirty-six, I'm sorry, that's thirty-six. That's my thirty-six, too. That overall decrease on Algebra I S O L test, and, and I guess that is passing of the course itself. I'm sure that someone already asked you that question, if you could just repeat the answer you gave earlier, or if no one has asked that question.
Actually, no one did answer that, ask that question. So this data shows, if we take from all the students, right, in our eighth grade?
I understand the chart. If you could tell us why you think there is overall decrease from sixty-one to fifty-six, and then my follow-up will be, the biggest drop seems to be English language learners. That's a huge drop. Whether that's a statistically significant sample in that, if so, I mean, that's an alarming extent of a drop. So if you could comment on that.
Right. And I don't have the numbers to really determine whether it's statistically. I only just have the percentages. But in general, we've seen that decline. Our eighth-grade algebra continues to be an open enrollment course, right? So students register for algebra, and we have seen a decrease in the number of students choosing to take algebra in eighth grade over, over the years. So that number has decreased as far as the students passing the class and passing the SOL.
Because number has decreased. Students taking, because more of them are taking in seventh.
They're taking Math eight. They're taking Math eight instead of Algebra I in eighth grade.
In eighth. But that still doesn't explain why. There is a drop in passing.
Well, it's a passing of both the course and the grade. I do not have, and I can do a little more investigation, but I don't have a specific information.
You can provide us with information why you think there is a drop, and much more significant drop for the English language learners.
You could speak to the English language.
Well, I mean, I think the English language learner drop goes to the similar data that we've looked at before, and that the increase between, for example, 2013 and 2016, the number of Level One and Two students that have come to middle schools and high schools has increased dramatically. And so therefore, the percentage of overall English learners in eighth grade that are taking algebra has decreased significantly, even taking the class. So the smaller pool of, less percentage of the English language learners are taking algebra in eighth grade, and then even less are, are passing because of the level.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Mr. Polio, could you, would you be able to drag me to anywhere, either in the report, anywhere with those numbers, so that I can take a look?
We'll, we'll have to follow up.
We'll have to follow up. I think we don't have the exact.
All right. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Evans, you had a go-back?
Yes, thank you. I, I will try to be brief. But I did want to pick up on what some of my colleagues have been talking about, and follow up on, you know, the issue of fidelity of implementation and equal access to advanced courses. You know, that certainly is critical. And I appreciate you talking about how the high-need schools with students at, at high risk do need more resources in order for us to, to provide that, you know, with fidelity. I also wanted to pick up on what both Ms. Hines and Ms. Darnett Kofax talked about with measures. This is something I think we really need to address head-on that, and I know you're working on it and would, would value anything you have to say at, at this point, but just want all of us to be thinking about this. I see schools that perform miracles every day with their students, with students who come to us with no, no English language, with very little education in their home country. And yet, if, if you look at the measures that are provided by the state or sort of the standard measures, that student, that student's success never comes across if they haven't passed an SOL, for example. The fact that that student has come to us with such high needs. So I think we, and, and I'm looking more and more, and I hear more from parents, my guess is that some of my colleagues do, too, where they see these ratings, you know, these online ratings, gradeschools.com, Zillow, and it gives a complete misimpression of a number of our schools, because it doesn't give credit to the wonderful work that's being done at schools that face the highest challenges. So I think if we are looking at alternative assessments, somehow we need to be able to give a measure of a school based on the reality that they're facing. And I realize that's a big task, but is that something that's been part of your thinking in these alternative assessments? How to, to give credit for, for, for bringing a child from, well, if you're talking about sifths, that's one thing. But certainly, if you, if you're dealing with very high poverty levels, very high English language learners, very high mobility and homelessness, those schools are dealing with issues that some of our schools are not. So how do we gauge that? How do we have a measure? And how do we tell the public about that story when the only story that's out there, kind of from the state and all that, is, is, did you pass your SOLs?
So the things that we've been discussing so far today have really been around alternative ways to measure student learning, not alternative ways to measure accountability for schools. And I do think you have to distinguish those two things, because when we talk about measuring accountability for schools, we don't really own that. That's what the state owns. And right now, the state is going through a process of trying to determine how exactly will they measure school quality under the new Every Student Succeeds Act, which replaced No Child Left Behind. So that has been part of the legislative package of the board, is to weigh in on that and ask for additional input and flexibility for how schools are measured. in on that and ask for additional input and flexibility for how schools are measured. That's something that we have been using our opportunities to contribute to that dialogue. Dr. Duran sits on the SOL Innovation Committee and he has been a big advocate of looking for different ways to measure school quality. Dr. Lockard has had an opportunity to provide input to the state on this as well through our Project Momentum experiences with the state. But this is an area that I think the board and the leadership team need to continue to work on because how the state rates schools often then translates into parent perception of how schools are rated. And when that's based on essentially one indicator.
Yes.
Right? Of one test and how students did on that, clearly that does not tell the whole picture of school quality, right? It doesn't tell the picture of the kinds of supports that the school provides for students. It doesn't tell the picture of the kinds of relationships that school personnel have with families. It doesn't tell the story of how students view the culture of their school.
Right.
Right? So we've got to find a better way to measure student performance and that's something that we own, but we've got to work together to find a better way to measure school quality and school performance as well. And that's something that we've got to work together with the state on.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that. And Dr. Duran, you had some other thoughts?
Yeah, I would only add, going back to what Ms. Hines asked about the equity dashboard, there is a lot of districts that are looking at telling a counter narrative around growth. So even if the state doesn't change the notion of proficiency rates in terms of how we are held accountable, we can find our own ways of, on a dashboard, telling the community our story of those schools that are showing growth based upon a variety of measures, whether it is a performance base or even looking at the standard state assessments. We're not telling the story holistically as a division of growth for all of our schools. And so we can certainly do that. It's going to take a larger conversation of developing what that would look like. And I think that goes back to your question, Ms. Hines, that we said we would follow up more on. And I think we need to add that to the piece of if we're going to do a dashboard, then how do we tell that other story that's not always told by just saying whether a student has met proficiency or not on a certain line that the state has set in the sand. You're right. Did they cross that line or not? Okay. We're having that conversation at the SOL Innovation Committee, but again, what I'm hearing from the state is, well, you know that you're not even, you don't have to just tell our story, you could tell your own story. So I think we need to think about how we do that as a division.
Well, good. I, I think, I, I'm very happy to hear that because we do need to tell that story and, and tell it loud and clear. And so I, I hope we continue that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. All right, Ms. Palchuk?
Thank you. And actually, Ms. Evans' question leads into one of, several of my questions, but it really was, I was so enlightened when I heard Dr. Staples speak about the work in progress and it really sounded like this is the holistic view, we need parent engagement, you know, student, student and community feel. And I know, you know, definitely anecdotally, I live in the Falls Church Pyramid and students and families love their school. They love that they're able to participate. That is one of the kindest places they've ever been. And I think we hear a contrast, you know, with students in some of my other schools where it feels much more competitive and just how that changes. So it's good to hear. I was actually going to ask update of how we are, what your thoughts are and where the state is going and are the plans, do you think, will be implemented? But it's also good to hear that we can do our own thing. But I do think it's important. I don't know if you have an update, Dr. Duran or Dr. Lockard, on the state's progress?
So right now, the state has really been looking at the high school assessments. And so right now, the State Board of Ed has approved all the recommendations from the SOL Innovation Committee, which directly aligned to our previous report to you on some of the work we'd like to see for high school redesign. And now, as you know, the legislature is meeting, so they are having to, they have the authority to either change some of those recommendations or not. But the one big one, I know Ms. McLaughlin brought it up, is that we, the approval move, moving forward is to align to the federal requirements at the high school level. So that's the biggest change we're seeing coming right now. Also looking at the actual assessments, there hasn't been yet anything I can update on in terms of what that will look like, but for the, there's, there's not hopes to make too many changes to that. So the main area is how can we just align to the federal requirements and not have as many assessments required at the high school for course of assessment? So that's been the bulk of the work right now. And we'll see what the legislature, I think people are very supportive and the reason why, the SOL Innovation Committee is a bipartisan committee and there are members on there from both the Education Committee, actually the chair. And so we vetted out any concerns that they may have. And what I've appreciated about being on the SOL Innovation Committee is that it's not been a, a political discussion. It's really been around what's best for students. And so having that holistic conversation has been helpful.
And I appreciate that. And I guess I'm wondering also, one specific thing that was on there was the conversation of how schools are evaluated and it did bring some of these more holistic things in there. So is that still a consideration?
That was not, yes, that is not part of the SOL Innovation Committee, but that is the work of the state and how they're aligning to the ESSA plan. And I'm not sure where we are at that point with their decision on that.
Okay. Cause my understanding is the state can make that decision. So according to ESSA.
They can.
So it's not aligning to something that's existing.
They can. And initially, the ESSA plan was going to be submitted in November from the state, but now they'll be looking at the March window. So they're currently looking at that. And I think the State Board of Ed will be meeting on the 25th or 26th of this month, so to have further discussions about that. I have not heard anything further from them because again, that's not part of the SOL Innovation Committee work.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Couple of the, many things have been asked. I do want to definitely echo, I think, the sentiments of several of my colleagues about access to equity. You know, I've been working as a volunteer in a school where students have not had that same rigor of math and science available to them. And if they could, they'd be applying to TJ. So, or going into advanced academic. So I think it's having a conversation about ensuring across the board, where is there access? I know some schools have had. So that goes into schools having, you know, STEM labs, maker spaces. And if there's a way to, you know, our science curriculum and efforts, I know we have a new coordinator in that department, that we can really help to ensure equity on that level, whether it's, you know, a dashboard or not, really ensuring, you know, whether it's a maker space, a STEM lab or other opportunities for children to have hands-on activities and exposure to real science and STEM learning. I think that's something that would be powerful for that work forward. So please let us know if there's ways to track that and then we can help support those efforts. Another question I have is, I think you addressed it a little bit about how we gather feedback and questions from teachers as we implement some of this work and I appreciate the framework you're using. I guess my questions are A, what is the role of IAs in that work and in professional development with IAs? Or have we not tapped that yet? And B, is there, what is the ongoing way, you know, once programs have been implemented, to continue to gather feedback, whether it's through teacher leaders, which I think is a great initiative, or other ways so that teachers continue to feel that they are part of the, the plan forward?
So I won't repeat too much of what we talked about before with the pilot schools and the formal structures for feedback, other than to say it is really important. And we have not had very many opportunities to work with instructional assistance. We would love to have an opportunity to do that. We think that they're critical partners in this work. My wife is actually working as an IA, a SPED IA, and she loves her job and she would love a lot more support in professional development. I can tell you that. So I know that they would welcome it, but we just really haven't had too many opportunities to do that. At the school level, I think IAs are often included as part of the collaborative teaming process and get opportunities for professional development there. But system wide, we don't have too many formal opportunities for that. So that is an area for growth for us to look at. And then continuing feedback beyond the, you know, the formal structures of the pilot work, whenever we do professional development sessions, we collect feedback on things. So that happens on a regular basis. When we work with department chairs, we use those meetings to collect feedback about how things are going in the school. So we try to use those formal structures that we have when we interact with teachers to be able to collect input on the work that we're doing and the services that they're getting. So we take that very seriously.
Okay, thank you. I do want to put a big plug in. I think that was one of the, my biggest takeaways from the School Board Association session I attended last year of working with IA especially in SPED is really the professional development. And so when we talk about fidelity of implementation, I know some schools are really far ahead in ensuring that IAs are incorporated and trained, but you know, I really want us as a system to find a way to do that, especially, it helps with retention as well. So I think that would be, would love updates on that, how we can support that. I have a specific question. I don't know if the, if I missed this or if this is something we can track. When we're looking at, at scores and at student achievement, and, and maybe this is something that the universal screener can address more fully, is I know there's, you know, there are conversations out there about local Level 4 versus centers versus, you know, students who even choose not to participate in any of those programs. Is there a way that we can break down students who are eligible for Level 4 services and whether they attend a center or at a local program or, or in their general classroom? Kind of the, the scores and the growth and the, and the difference that, that we see between their choices of programming? I don't know if that makes sense, but I think that is really important and we're having this conversation. So if there's a way we can gather that, I think it would be very valuable.
Yeah, we, we, we can look at information that way. I'd also say we didn't include that type of information in this report because again, this report is really limited to those board-approved metrics. So if there's information that any board member would like to have, if we kind of capture that in the next steps, then that's something that we can work with Office of Student Testing and others on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate some trying to, last final thing, I, maybe as a follow-up, I'd like to hear more about the blended and hybrid learning and the FLESS and LTC and what that means. That's my, my heart. And also, I love that we're working more with our partners at George Mason and some of this professional development we're doing and with our teachers. And I'm wondering, are we working with them on the kind of backend as they are training teachers to implement some of what we would like in teacher training?
So I hate sounding like a broken record, but we never have enough time to talk about all this stuff. So we do have a partnership with George Mason. I actually meet with the dean on a monthly basis and we've got strategic programs that we're working on. One of those is around professional, their professional development school. And we're working with them to basically align their development standards for teacher certification with the direction that we're going in the division. And, and the dean is very gracious and very, very collaborative there, as are the professors. So we've got a great relationship with George Mason. We hire the majority of their teacher candidates into FCPS. So there's a lot of benefit to FCPS for some, you know, working on, on some of these projects. So yeah, we're, we're working on that. The hybrid blended learning, we really won't have too much of an opportunity to talk about this today, but we are giving quarterly reports to the board. We're going to have this spring another opportunity to provide some information to the board. And we're working with Johns Hopkins University on the program evaluation for how that's going. So you'll get information probably like April, May, June about how that's going.
Perfect. Wonderful. And just finally, my pitch for supporting parent leaderships and, and support of their students. As we know, the involvement of parents and their advocacy of students is so important for their success. And so I do want to continue, you know, we are working on this, but to grow and enlarge our, our programs and our ability, whether it's through future community schools or our parent liaison or any other program that we're doing, our early lit and family lit, what, if we can maybe start to see what effect it has or how we can support the work. Anecdotally, it seems to be very meaningful and parents have said to me, their students were at the same level as students who went through Head Start after some of these programs.
So we'll, we'll have some information on that in the Strategy 3 and 4 report and we can talk more about that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate, thank you so much.
All right. As I noted, we had started 10 minutes late and then certainly there's been an incredible amount of board member interest and questions and feedback from staff. So, you know, Chairman Evans stepped out, okay. Vice Chair, Ms. Tross, I know you all definitely do your best to try and estimate the time, but Dr. Lockard, for next year, even though I know we've broken up Goal 1 report into two work sessions, I think it's evident here that we probably need more time than what we anticipated. And that's because as the meeting manager, I'm going last and I will just tell you all that I had two pages worth of questions and I'll probably reserve a lot of my remarks to our next work session and you'll all just have to realize it's relating to today's part of the report. At the macro level, I, I, I first want to say that I greatly appreciate the intensive amount of work that went into this. And there's no doubt in my mind, the dedication that this system has to, to student success. But I, I, I wanted to kind of give you a heads up now before the next work session and before the board votes, that I am concerned about where we are with this report. And I think it's about the board giving you better guidance. And we talked about this, what sort of direction. I, I feel like there's a lot of phenomenal data charts, but there isn't the analysis. And most of us know how to read a chart, but we need to understand what's it telling us. And from a governance standpoint where we're told all the time, don't get into operations, don't, you know, get into the micromanaging. But I can't know what you all are doing operationally in terms of your analysis when it's not in the report. And I, I worry that it's maybe a timing, you guys being rushed to try and deliver something to us, or if this is just the way we keep doing these things. But, you know, for example, if we could go to page 32, I believe that's where we had the AP and IB charts. Yeah, Ms. Schultz looked at me and started to say, oh, you know, this is great. We're comparing course marks to tests. And absolutely, this is steps forward in progress. But it doesn't give us the analysis and, you know, Mark Greenfelder's in the audience, so I'm giving him props right here. Mark Greenfelder, Mike Mukai, these are people who, you know, principal leaders who recognize that causality, not just correlation of grades to AP and IB scores is so essential for, you know, having that ability to say to our students how you, you know, mastered the material. It was reflected in not just this test, but then obviously then it was shown in your letter grades. And I, I'd want to point something out to you in terms of the analysis that I would have liked to have seen. If you note under those students who earned a C+, 19% of the kids who got a C+ on their report card as a final grade to the colleges, they scored four or five. A four or five is college level credit. That's considered really high mastery. Go to the next level. You had 15% of the kids who were earning Cs had gotten a four or a five. We should not even see that except for even smaller percentages. So I just, I know that sometimes we tend to look at, oh, okay, so we had some kids, 8% who got a 2 or below and still ended up with an A. 15% of the kids who scored a 1 or a 2 ended up with an A- minus. I mean, those are sometimes concerning, but where the harm happens is the kids who had a 4 or 5 and had that low score. Because I happen to be a high school parent on the front lines, I'm aware of high schools, not just my own children's high school, but others where high school families come and contact me and say, how did my kid get a 5 and they ended up with a C or a C+. That's just as much of where the analysis needs to happen. You all have to manage so much, again, at the highest level, but I would just ask that whoever we have in our system that's able to dig deep and look at this more deeply, these are some warning signs here that we're not allowing our students to succeed when those things happen. And I want to give a special shout out of appreciation to Dr. Francis Ivy and Executive Principal Rebecca Baining because they've been working with me at the school level. And Dr. Angela Atwater has been interested in doing this school level analysis where we have the ability, and I want my colleagues to know, we have the ability to have the, the regional superintendents working with our principals and saying, when we look at our final grades of our AP final exams and then the scores, are we seeing disparities? Maybe just in one classroom setting versus some of the others. But these are the things we have to be picking up on and helping for student success. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate in the report, it references the homework piloting that's going on. And I think the, that it, one of the things the report says is reflective tools are being used in this pilot work. I would just ask that maybe in that part of the narrative, because it's such a key piece, that if you ask any high school student, any high school parent whose child is sleep deprived because they're trying to perform at their very best, and we hear it all the time, we need to know like what is, what are those reflective tools we're talking about? It's to give hope to our families on the front lines. And, you know, finally, again, there's so much more that I want to talk to, but this report gathers up again... so much more that I want to talk to you. But this report gathers up again, hard data on testing and things. One of the things I would like to see that we do in sometimes our community engagement and outreach system is we've done parent surveys and student surveys. We don't have the student voice here at all. We have a whole report, but there's nothing here for students to say to us, "How do I feel about the learning?" Again, I will tell you, as being the parent of my third high school kid in the last, you know, 10 years, you know, what I'm seeing and hearing is our goal of Portrait of Graduate, and Sloan, you put it beautifully when you said that we want big conceptual ideas to drive the classroom setting for critical and creative thinking that transfers to student understanding. The students and the teachers want that, but in combination with what the AP curriculum is forcing teachers to do, that's one problem. But I shared this with Sloan during our preparation. We, the 12 of us sitting around this table and the leadership team, are contributing to the homework load and the student's stress level because we are not being clear to our teachers and students that the number of assessments needed per week to go into a gradebook is creating an enormous problem. At minimum, everybody needs to start doing the math. We've been giving guidance to teachers that ideally, we want two graded assessments in the gradebook per week. That's 18 per quarter. That's 36 per semester. Times that, times five academic courses at the high school level where kids are taking a foreign language, these kids have got over 150 graded assessments that they are facing in a semester. How exhausted would you be? And I will tell you, we have some classes where it's 26 assessments in a quarter per class. That's 52 in a semester for one class. Multiply that times five academic classes, you could have 250 times you got graded on something. That's teacher workload problem. That's student stress level. Students are saying they walk into the building every day and are getting tested or quizzed in one of their five academic subjects, every single day. A parent wrote to me recently and said, "Megan, 14 class days, 28 graded assessments. When do teachers teach? When do students learn?" So I will send some follow-up questions to all of you that then maybe we can touch on at the next work session. I can't emphasize enough, I know every one of us in this room cares deeply about student success. And I am so grateful to be a parent in a school system that is dedicated to this level of work and the report is robust. But I think we're almost missing some of the key pieces again about what is the student learning experience in the classroom when we are trying to put in some really great supports to our teachers with professional development and fidelity and curriculum review, but we've got to start talking to the canaries in the coalmine. What's your learning experience like? Elizabeth and I have been doing it for three straight years. We're doing it again for our fourth year in a row because we share so many schools together. What the kids are telling us is not the experience that I know you want for them and what is so beautifully stated in this report. But I think it's going to be having to maybe look at some additional metrics, not loading up your plate. Maybe some of them just aren't giving, getting us there. Maybe we give you more time on this thing. But I can't speak strongly enough that what we're trying to do here, these kids, they need our help sooner rather than later. And then finally, to the closing the achievement gap, because I was so impressed going to the presentation that Mr. Polio and his team is doing on this and Sloan and Francisco, bravo. It's amazing. But I will tell all of you, because Tammy and I are on skip and Dolly has been working with us and Janie worked on it, if we're wondering one of the problems, we're not talking about the fact that especially when these kids, we do great work with them in the elementary school level. They get to middle and high school. If they don't have the homework supports at home, the project-based learning supports at home, it is harder for them to compete. It's harder for them to take on those more rigorous classes. Community school model with after-school homework supports, you know, which means, you know, late buses, that targeted to the schools where we see the need the most, that's, I think, what Sloan, when you talked about, it's going to cost some things. I can't think of a greater investment of money than homework supports for kids whose parents have a language barrier, who have an education-level barrier. That's how we help them at the high school level start to find that it's a reality to perform at the highest level in one of the highest performing school districts in the country. So with that, Ms. Evans, oh, Dr. Lockhart wants to say anything? Say something first, sorry.
Yes, just, I'll be extremely brief. I just want to thank Dr. Duran, Dr. Presidio, Ms. Klemenco, Mr. Polio for the work that they and their teams have been doing. This is the right work, especially I'm pleased about the implementation of the planning and pacing guides. Right? When we talk about fidelity of implementation, we have to start with implementation of what, right? And we've spent a lot of time working on our plans with Portrait of a Graduate and our strategic plan. And so this is an important and necessary reset so that we can align ourselves with what we believe to be the most important instructional work for our students. As was mentioned earlier, it would be very simple just to put some program or plan in place that Dr. Duran and others mentioned folks have done. But that's not going to get the results that we want. It also doesn't allow us to meet individual needs in our classrooms. We've talked a lot about the diversity and the unique needs that we have in our classrooms in Fairfax County. And so I think it's the right approach. I also have heard about the importance of staying the course. We have begun important work. And I think the last thing that I would recommend to you would be any change of course of action, particularly as it relates to the instructional programming and the implementation of curriculum and instruction and the resources that we're providing. It's a valuable approach and I think it needs to have the time to follow through and see the results. And that's all I'm going to say for now because it's already been said. Thank you.
Ms. Nick?
Yes.
Can we make sure that we have our next steps? I think we have most of our reports we're going to bring back, but I want to make sure that we, or we can do it offline if that's better.
Oh, no, no, we'll do the next step.
But before we do that, I want to say also thank you, because she's in the audience, Kathy Oliver and her team, because the OST department has really played a heavy role in making sure we get all of this data disaggregated and certainly some of the follow-ups as well. So I definitely want to acknowledge her and her staff and thank them very, very much. We could not have done this without them.
Okay, can we pull up the next steps very quickly and review them? Okay, excellent. It even puts the board members' names next to the proposed next step. So in order to do this as quickly as possible, I ask each board member, look at where your name is and see if it is captured accurately what you intended. And then I would actually ask you to raise your hand if you've read it and it says what you wanted it to be. Okay. So Ms. Darrenat Kovacs, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Moon, Ms. Palchek, please check yours. Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yeah, the first one was actually broader than just elementary school science fairs. It was ensuring that we had an equity of opportunity in the science curriculum at each of our elementary schools, which would include amongst other things, a science fair at all elementary schools to ensure that all of our kids have the foundational, the foundations for not only the science, I had actually said science, and then had also talked about the importance of ensuring that we had a fidelity of implementation in the math curriculum at all of our elementary schools.
Okay, but in terms of a next step, it's just to ask staff to make sure that's a focus?
That that's a focus. And then the second thing that I asked for was to provide each of the school board members with a school-level report on the metrics that are in the, in the report for opportunity, for achievement gaps and AP and IB scores by school level. What they've got now is by district level. And you, Dr. Duran offered as part of that, a tutorial, which maybe we could do as a professional development for school board members on how to access the web-based tools.
So I would just refine a little bit and just say, provide a school-level report. That way, it's not like nine magisterial district reports. I think just one that's going to just break it out by, by the pyramid.
And then everybody can look at it, okay.
And since it's actually not even pyramid, then it would just be a high school-level report.
It's not only high school, though. It's the elementary schools and...
Well, then you don't want it saying achievement gaps on AP and IB scores because that's only at the high school level.
No, I didn't say on. It's and, as well as the achievement gaps, to include what reports are already in the, so it includes the AP and IB scores, but it also includes the SOL scores, all of the metric, all of these rolled up charts.
So if I could, because this does not really impact ISD, it really impacts OST. So I might be way outside of my scope of influence here. But I would want to make sure that every board member really wants that and we're really clear on precisely what we want. Because if we try to replicate the narrative report for...
I would like it on my schools.
Yeah. So if we try to replicate the narrative report with all of those charts at each individual school level, the amount of work involved with that is going to be monumental for OST.
Then can we have it for the, for one of the better, the at-risk schools?
You can have whatever you want. I'm just saying, I would want to make sure that there's clarity of...
Kathy, I want to make sure she has, wants to ask a question or say something.
I just want to make sure there's clarity of what data is really being requested.
Well, and not to now pick on Mark Greenfelder, but I mean, I know when we met with Project Momentum Dialogues, we had intensive breakout of each one of our schools. And, you know, it can depend on the metrics, but he was definitely showing us where they were going in terms of which schools weren't, you know, weren't meeting the pass rates and things. So I think what I'm hearing Dr. Presidio say is, there are so many different measures. And if you were to do that for 150 elementary schools, that's a lot of work on top of the intensive analysis that Project Momentum and Closing the Achievement Gap are already doing. So I will let Kathy Oliver speak to this, but I do think that we are going to need to refine that question.
Francis Ivy and the RAS have requested OST to do something very similar. And we do have somebody who's been assigned to that task. We only just recently finished providing, for example, the AP and IB data for this report. So we haven't spent a lot of time on the RAS request, but it's very similar to what you're saying and it's on our agenda.
So Dr. Lockhart, I mean, I think this is one of those things where perhaps if it's, you feel it's appropriate, what's being prepared and provided to the RAS might then be beneficial for board members to review if they so choose. And in fact, it might even be meaningful to sit down with our RASs and look at it together. And then that, again, nine board members and the at-larges can make decisions on how much information they need.
I agree. And I think that was part of the intent, that they were doing that anyway. So.
And then again, if anyone is interested in that individual training, you can have your EAA reach out to us and we can certainly set up that time because then you can go through and do a lot of your own reports that you may be interested in as well. I know not everyone is interested in that and we will provide you reports if you'd like us to. But I think it would be very helpful if you're interested in perhaps one school one day or another school, a different subgroup or different area. We'd be happy to show you how you could individually do that as well.
So if I can suggest modifying the second bullet to read, provide the school-level reports of metrics being planned for the RAS to the school board members when they are available.
Yeah, I was going to say notify, notify us when it's there, but providing it would be, would be great. I mean, whatever gets sent over to the RASs then we would like to see.
And rather than being planned, it's being prepared for the RAS.
Mm-hmm.
That works.
All right. Before we vote on these next steps...
Wait, me, sorry.
Right, I was saying, before we vote, I wanted you to clarify your questions first, make sure they're correct.
We obviously all have the number of the ESOL students at each high school. That's not what I had talked about. Ms. Polio talked about the regional influx of students. So I kind of wanted to break down for us what's, I mean, I know this, but I think it needs to be in some kind of chart form. What's a small, medium, and large program? And then do maybe an analysis so we can see, you know, it's just presenting numbers that I know that we already have, but perhaps report a five-year analysis to show us between the small, medium, and large programs and what the growth is.
Which programs?
High schools.
Registration numbers?
Correct. I think Rich knows what I want.
We can, we can give the numbers of students that register each year by level at each high school.
Does that sound correct, Ms. Kovacs, what you're hoping to capture?
That's good. And I think it's important, yeah, between the small, medium, and large, because I'm not exactly sure what you categorize as small, medium, and large.
I can give you a list of the small, medium, and large schools.
That would be great then.
Some of the larger jumbo.
And your next question?
And I'm still working on this one.
Ms. Schultz.
For mine, it's just provide disaggregated data for students with disabilities. It's not specific to just the Algebra I. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, because that's the whole point is that we could, yeah, we could have, well, I think you guys have to look at whether, I'm not going to, I'm not going to direct you how it should be disaggregated. I think you guys should look at it and see where it makes sense to disaggregate. But I, but I think it has to be disaggregated for us to have a more meaningful understanding of why that line is where it is.
Okay. Mr. Moon, your question, correct?
I think we might want to also add overall decline.
Okay.
Not just for English language learners, but there was an overall decline. And then if you could answer for the English language learners.
Alia.
No, you don't delete ELL. You just add overall decline and English language learners as well.
I know, I saw you.
But you wanted the overall decline for, for all students in addition to?
Yes.
Right. So for all students and English language learners.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Darrenat Kovacs's request, I think, is similar to the one we've already talked about in terms of, the one on 32 to 33, the breakdown by pyramid, that's the one that we already had mentioned in the previous one, Karen Corbett Sanders.
That we'll now be getting from, in the RAS report.
It's duplicative.
Okay. But we need to go back to my other one because that's still not written properly. Well, first of all, we need to say it's for the ESOL students. Yes. Rich, and you can go together. Okay. Does the board understand what I want? So if we vote on it, we get that even if it's written that way?
No, anything I want. Thanks, Pat.
Yeah. Right, since we're about to vote on, we need to know what it is we're voting on. Provide a five-year analysis of the ELL students.
It's not just SIF, yeah.
I had mentioned that we continue to see...
Correct. That's what prompted my question.
We continue to see large numbers of English learners enroll in our schools. And that it was specific to certain regions, you know, particularly that higher numbers of students are entering certain areas of the county. So what, what we can provide is a graph, excuse me, a table that would show numbers of students entering, for example, in the 2015-16 school year, numbers of English learners entering each school.
High school.
High school. And by level, meaning by which ELP level, 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. So you kind of, excuse me? excuse me? In a heat map?
We don't need a heat map, because he's going to show it by high school. Or you want to show a region? Right.
A heat map's fine, but that's not, that's secondary. This is, the table and the graph is what I want, and I do want over a five-year period.
So can we delete where it says by small, medium, and large high school programs? Because at this point, he's going to give it for all 25 high schools.
And if he, in the keys, Rich, if you can have, you know, what you consider small, medium, and large, it will probably be very evident from the chart, but I think for other board members who don't have as many of these high schools, I think we need to know what staff is using to differentiate.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Evans, you want to clarify a question?
Yeah, I wanted to capture the conversation about the different measures of quality of schools. This kind of relates to Ms. Hines's question, but I think it's probably a separate one. And I guess I'm going to look to Dr. Duran to see if this is, I think this is a longer-term issue, but, but I do think that we, we should capture the idea of having staff bring us alternative measures of school quality that takes into account level of challenges and growth measures.
I think that, I mean, I think it captures it in the second part of the sentence, but if you want to change the wording a little bit, or...
Well, it's a student and system.
So talk to adding school, you want to?
You know, let's try it as a separate.
Separate one, it can be.
I think it's separate, and, you know, let me put this out there and see if my colleagues agree. I would say bring the, bring a recommendation to the board on alternative measures of school quality that take into account level of challenges and growth measures.
And growth.
Yeah, and growth, yeah. That take into account level of challenges. And growth.
Wouldn't, isn't growth by default a challenge, Ms. Evans?
I think they're two different things. It's two different things.
Okay, and I, as meeting manager, I did want to note that the thing I suggested isn't up there, which is that I would like staff to consider developing some sort of metric that will capture parent-student input on their educational experience related to student success. On their educational experience as it relates to student success. Instead of saying "there," it would be "the," because it's going to be the students, but the parents and the students will have... And it might be just, you know, if we put parentheses, "IE," survey input, because I think that's obviously where you might end up getting it, is survey input with questions that relate to the instructional environment. Okay.
Can I go back to mine now?
Yes. And Ms. Palchek, you wanted to clarify your question?
Yeah, and so it's eligibility, but, but the setting, right, with students, whether they are choosing to stay in a general ed classroom, local Level 4, or at a center. And I don't know if we have that yet, or if we need to wait for the universal screener results to be able to track individual student growth.
It would depend what data. If you're talking about comparing SOL data or something like that, that could be done now. Is that the student achievement data?
Yeah, I guess right now, all we have is really SOL data, and so to be able to, can we have that for individual students as well, or would you just compare students in one setting versus another, I guess?
I think you would have to...
Aggregate data.
Students who have deferred, students who have chosen a local Level 4, and students who have chosen to go to the center.
Okay.
From a cohort, and then compare their achievement.
That'd be great.
I think we need to think about that to make sure that it tells us something, right?
Right, I guess, I know I have several schools in my, in my district that in the past few years have implemented local Level 4s and grown their programs, so just wanted to see, you know, if there's kind of a difference of students choosing to stay in those versus going to the centers.
I think the questions that will probably come up is how broad this study needs to be, and so I'm not sure.
Okay, we can chat more if that's helpful before deciding on this. All right, we have quite a few next steps to just quickly review and vote on, and I will remind everyone that we will have another work session that still relates to Goal 1, and I will actually defer some of my other suggestions to visit with Dr. Lockard and Mr. Paris, and just give you advanced notes that after consulting with them, I may bring some next steps at the following work session that maybe helps us in this great work. So with that, colleagues, again, the goal here is if you would like staff to bring this additional work or information to us, we're, I'm just capturing the consensus of the board, for you to raise your hand and vote for it. And Dr. Lockard, certainly, if there's anything here that the board is indicating with next steps, that as you confer with your leadership team, and it appears it's going to be much more arduous than anticipated, I would expect you'll visit with our chair and vice chair, and then the related board member if anything needs to be refined. This way, I don't want staff overwhelmed with what they see up here.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity for that.
Okay, everybody, get ready to start voting. Next steps.
Sorry, that's a good point, Ms. McLaughlin. Is there anything, Dr. Lockard, up there you see frankly, that's an early indicator that, hey, listen, before you vote on this, just be aware. I mean, I'm not saying speak now or forever hold your peace, but if there's a, if there's something up there that gives you pause, I think you should let us know.
Okay, well, right now, I think it's going to be, for me, us starting to dig into these a little bit and see. There may be a couple that could be longer or lengthier to get to, but again, I think it's a matter of sitting down with the folks and saying, what do we need to get, and how do we need to do it? Dr. Duran, I don't know if you were going to mention something along those lines.
The only one is, obviously, the dashboard is going to be the one that's going to take quite a bit of time to really think through. Many of these others are going to be ones that will require work, but we can bring back. That one is going to take quite some time, so. We will begin working on it, but it won't be quick to come back.
Well, and as I read Ms. Hines's proposal, it's bringing a recommendation, so it might be that you could, yeah, map that out, flesh it out. Great. Okay, here we go. Focus on ensuring that there is equity of opportunity in science curriculum at each elementary school to include, among other things, participation in the science, or promoting science fair participation? Okay. Okay, science fair, STEM labs, et cetera. Okay, who, can I see a show of support for that? Okay, there we go. Provide the school-level reports of metrics being prepared for the RAS when they are available. There we go. Bring a recommendation to the board on an equity closing gaps dashboard for FCPS with recommended measures of student and system progress that is taking place. Raise your hand. Okay. Okay, measures of student and system progress. Support, okay, there we go. Bring a recommendation to the board on alternative measures of school quality that take into account level of challenges and growth, for Ms. Evans. Provide a five-year analysis of numbers of students entering ELL programs by level and school size. Okay. Provide disaggregated data for students with disabilities. Provide more data regarding reasons for overall decline for all students and ELL students passing both course and SOL for Algebra I by the end of 8th grade in the narrative page. Okay.
Question from Ms. Palchek on hers. I'm not sure I understand by setting, by what you mean by setting.
So just whether those students that are eligible for local, for Level 4 are either at a local setting, at a center, or in their general ed classroom. I have some pyramids where they're, they have to leave their pyramid to be at a center.
So would that be by AP?
But you're saying more data, I mean, it's very nebulous to me to say more data. Like, what more?
I didn't say more data. I don't know what's the best way to be able to see the data for grade-level students, whether, you know, obviously, starting in 3rd grade and above.
I just don't know what we're voting on, so I can't, I can't vote.
Are we talking specifically about advanced academics here?
I had said advanced academics. I don't know if...
Yes, so Level 4 eligibility.
We should say...
I think we still can talk about what that data might look like to your question, Ms. Schultz. We're still not, we still need to think about that.
And student scores on what, on tests, on?
SOLs.
I mean, I'm happy to discuss it.
Okay, then can we say SOLs?
Because we have that right now for everyone.
I think the question was if we have other data, but we do not yet have other data available, so.
I think what you're trying to see is that we have students who are eligible for Level 4 services, and they have choices. They either defer, they go to a local Level 4, or they attend a center. And she was trying to see if the achievement of those students might differ based on that choice that they made.
Thank you, that was very well put.
But that's, but isn't that, isn't that, aren't you trying to hypothesize how they would do if they were in a different, I mean, I don't understand how you could bring us that data. How could you, how could you bring us data on how they would do in a different setting?
Not how the students would do, but when students make those choices, students who defer, how do they typically do compared to students who are at local Level 4 compared to students at a center?
I don't, you, what you just said makes sense. I don't think that's what that says.
You are, thank you. I would just add where it says who deferred to, comparing students who defer to those students. There you go. Who tend. Then I, I mean...
Right, I mean, I mean, we're receiving the data. The comparison is, I guess, made by, well, sure, I guess it's comparing those three.
So Ms. Mulberg, I would say, now it's kind of saying it twice, so I would, where you have things in parentheses, keep and go backwards, and then provide data. Provide additional data, yeah, comparing. And then, yeah. Okay, so now that it's been fine-tuned, can I see a show of support for Ms. Palchek's request?
I don't know that it fully captures it anymore, right? Like, because there are three categories, correct?
Okay.
We lost centers. We have local Level 4.
General.
And...
And centers.
Level 4 centers, I think we need. Who attend local Level 4 and Level 4 centers. I know the terminology is confusing.
And some who are not in either, but who are eligible, I guess is my...
If you're eligible, that's deferred.
Deferred to those who, okay.
Okay, can I see a show of support?
I mean, that would be ideal. I don't know that we can get there right now, so that's kind of the next step. That's kind of a future.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's captured correctly, but I think in the end, they can always circle back with Ms. Palchek, so we're basically trying to get some local Level 4 versus center data on it. Can I see a show of hands if people want that information? She's wanting data to show who's staying behind and choosing not to go to the centers and even necessarily going into local Level 4, but they're eligible for it.
So the question is, those who are eligible for center but stay at their local Level 4, is that what you're looking for?
Or defer and stay in their general ed classroom and do not accept Level 4 services.
And don't accept them, oh.
So there are three categories in a lot of my schools.
So basically, you take the pool of kids who test in to the center or are found eligible for a Level 4 center, break them up into three groups, those who don't do Level 4 at all, those who do local Level 4, and those who do center, and compare their academic achievement. Correct? Okay.
I would like to see less than regions, you know, schools, I have schools with different models of how they offer local Level 4, so I, I don't know how much, how much, so my question to you is how, how much it can be broken down, and we can have that conversation for a first step, and then we can have a conversation about future.
I think we have the kind of direction, but we need to kind of now go back and see what would be the best first step, because it's going to be a couple of steps. But I think we have the general essence of what you're asking, and then staff can go back and figure out how to best bring that to you, and if it's not, then we'll come back with another one.
So I just want to make sure, Ms. Palchek, because this is unusual for me. I mean, we're, in my district that I'm familiar with, there's either a center or they have local Level 4.
Right, many of my schools do not have local Level 4. Some do, some have been around for many years, some are newer, some have different models.
So your point is staff will be able to capture where you have a local Level 4 in a school. Some elementary schools where that's not there, the center's not there, they happen to be Level 4, and they're just staying in, yep. So I think then they should be able to get that district-wide, breaking it by pyramid.
And if the next step needs to say, you know, have staff come back with a way, a first step and future steps to gather this information, if that makes it more clear, I'm happy. But if you're clear with that.
I think we can get it at the division level, and are you comfortable with just reading and math scores? Not social studies, science?
Yes, reading and math would be important first step, and we can maybe discuss if, if it can be broken down any more than a division level?
Yeah, we can absolutely, we can absolutely look at it.
Okay. So Ms. Mulberg, it would say provide additional data in reading and math scores. Math, here we go. Okay, everybody, please show, give me a show of hands if you support getting that information. Okay, we're good. And then, final one, consider developing metric that will capture parent-student input on the educational experience as it relates to student success. Okay, all right. And again, Dr. Lockard, happy to talk about that as staff tries to interpret what that would be.
Like I said with, appreciate that. Like I said with all these, as we start to dive in a little bit and see, I'll communicate with you if we have any, any significant challenges.
Absolutely, and I think that, again, the idea here is we will be voting on the existing report, but as we want to build, you know, board information and better understanding, it might be that what can we do within, so next year, when this comes back to us again, is there any refinements that would help us from a governing and policy standpoint? Excellent. Okay, Ms. Evans, I will turn it over to you. I know there will need to be a two-minute break, so this does conclude the Goal 1 strategic plan portion of the work session. It will be, I assume, Ms. Evans, five minutes, because we've been going for three hours, and people might need just a quick break.
Right, let's take a five-minute break, and then we will start the budget session. Ms. Darnett Kovacs and Mr. Moon will manage that session. And Ms. Darnett Kovacs, did you want to make an announcement?
We, since Ms. McLaughlin, I appreciate the way you managed that session, and this is not, but we are an hour and a half behind. So we will have a hard stop at 12:30, wherever we are in the process, and so, but we will have, you know, we have budgeted, budgeted up to four hours to talk about budget. So with a, with a hard stop at 12:30, and then go beyond there.